We'll call the meeting doors for Wycomico County Council Legislative Session 2023-15 for August 1st, 2023. Those that would like to stand and join us in the Lord's Prayer and Pleasure of Easiness, please do.
Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. It is thy kingdom come, and it will be done on earth as is on heaven. And give us this day our daily bread. And forgive those who trespass against us; these not return us. This is the temptation of the most evil, the highest kingdom, the power, and the glory of it. Amen.
The Lord is with you, to the cloud of the United States of America, and to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, in the abyssal with the liberty of the just law.
I'd say we can. To recognize Megan Outen, Salisbury City Council. Glad to have you here tonight. Entertained a motion from council to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Any corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion's carried, consent agenda has been approved. This time we have a proclamation, we have two proclamations to read. The first proclamation is for the recognition of the month of August as Academic Preparation Awareness. And we have Mr. Josh Hastings here, and Monica Brooks, President of the NAACP, is the recipient. Good to have you, Monica. Good to see you. Yeah.
How's everybody doing tonight?
All right.
So this proclamation is Academic Preparation Month, whereas earning a diploma from high school is one of the most cherished things a person can experience in their life, one of the greatest achievements. Whereas attending school daily and having the support of parents to achieve this goal is the best approach to reduce the dropout rates in our school system and to show children that they are truly cared about and supported. Whereas encouraging students to remain in school to learn and to help students understand the importance of following directions and honoring rules as life skills and mentoring students to learn the value of self-respect and respect for others is essential to their lives. Whereas the clearest path for a child to become a productive and responsible citizen is the support and encouragement to stay in school. By receiving a high school diploma, the foundation to build a productive life may be realized by the students, and we will see their dreams come true. So now therefore, Wycomico County Council and the county executive hereby proclaim that August 2023 is Academic Preparation Month and encourage all citizens and parents to inspire the children to be successful citizens. So, signed this day, August 1st, 2023, by county executive and all members of the county council.
Thank you.
Before I get a picture, and I do want to get some comments, we have with us, of course, Monica Brooks, NAACP. Want to say a couple words?
Sure. Thank you. Good evening. Thank you so much for this opportunity to stand before you for something so important. Academic Preparedness Month, you think about it as being something so narrow, but yet it's so grave. It's so, so, not grave, so huge, meaning that it's a holistic approach that allows our students to get to this place where they can graduate, where they can thrive in our communities. So we're, as NAACP, not only do we come alongside of the schools to assist them in their programming, being in the community and being advocates for our children, coming alongside and helping parents, but also doing anything that we can to help pave the way for greatness, because all of our students deserve the opportunity to be whatever they want to be, to have every opportunity to be treated equally and fairly, to have access to anything available to anyone else, not based on the color of your skin or your academics, I mean, or your, how much money your family has or doesn't have, whether your parents completed school or not. We're here to make a difference. So we are looking forward to coming alongside anyone else that wants to be an asset to our kids. And certainly, we're looking forward to our county getting to that wonderful measure of mark beyond maintenance of effort in the amount that we give as well. So we thank you so much for this opportunity and anything that we can ever do to assist you in your different endeavors, to help our kids, please do not hesitate to reach out. Thank you.
Next proclamation we have is to recognize the month of August as Black Philanthropy Month, and we have the A-listers here tonight. We have Sharon Morris here, Sonya Whitehead, and Monica, you're still here, right? And Monica, yes. I'm sorry, Lori Carter, sorry, Lori Carter, co-founders of the, yeah, and Lori Carter, co-founders of the Giving Circle of, you have to tell me what it is. It's BECF. I know it's an acronym, I'm not.
As always, it's great to give these proclamations for positive things, especially in the black community. The proclamation says, whereas Dr. Jacqueline Bouvier Copeland of Pan-African Women's Philanthropy Network and the Wise Fund Women Invested to Save the Earth established the month of August as the Black Philanthropy Month in 2011 with recognition by the United Nations as part of its 2011 Declaration of International Decade for People of African Descent. And whereas Black Philanthropy Month is an annual celebration of African descent given in all its forms that include time, talent, treasure, and experience, the month-long observance invites all people, and in particular those of African ancestry, to celebrate August and beyond, to promote the power of giving, to transform lives that will ultimately sustain black communities. And whereas black communities have both historical and traditional vested reasons to celebrate the rich shared traditions of giving, self-help, and innovation, a legacy of philanthropy merits, a concerted effort to spotlight good works, educate future generations, and inspire giving. And whereas the promotion that philanthropy is instrumental to improve social, educational, economic, and health outcomes in black communities is critical, we laud the visionary and co-founders of the Black Excellent Community Fund, the Community Foundation's newest Giving Circle for creating a pathway to celebrate Black Philanthropy Month and to bring its awareness to further our community's nonprofit and charitable interests. Now therefore, be it resolved that all people of Wycomico County are encouraged to appreciate and observe August as Black Philanthropy Month, to celebrate and encourage the culture, richness, and philanthropic spirit of our community, and to recognize the vital role generously plays in ensuring a healthy, safe, and prosperous community in which to live, work, and flourish. Is signed by our county executive and our county council president, Representative County Council John Cannon. Ladies, I want to present this to you. I'm going to sit down. She wants to take a picture. All right, I think I can stand. Oh, wait a minute, no. Oh, Laura, Laura wants to.
I'm not telling this right. I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
There we go.
I'm sorry.
I just wanted to say thank you for the recognition of Black Philanthropy Month. This is our first year of giving out grants, so we've given out one set of grants in February for Black History Month. We are about to give out our second set of grants. And I also just want to take this time, so you can go on with your meeting, to acknowledge that we are Giving Circle of the Community Foundation. So I wanted to acknowledge Erica Joseph, taking pictures in the back there, President of the Community Foundation as well. I do have some information for you all, so you can just see, so you'll know what the acronym means. And thank you.
This time, we also have a very special introduction. We'd like to introduce to Wycomico County Lieutenant Sean Simmons and Captain Angel Simmons, who are now the new leaders of the Salvation Army. If you'd like, you can come to the podium, please.
So my other half is not here. He's with our children tonight. I'm Captain Angel Simmons, and we were so excited to come to Salisbury. We have been welcomed with open arms. We were blessed to be able to be a part of some great programs. So if you don't know what's going on at the Salvation Army, we have a wonderful thrift store that offers great things to the community. I went shopping with my kids, and I kept hearing people say, wow, they have those things. So if you haven't gone there, it's a treat to go to that thrift store. And that thrift store supports our other programs, such as our senior program, which serves over 85 seniors every day. Five days a week, they can come there. We also have our social service ministry that is helping the community with utilities and rent and food assistance, over 500 food boxes a month. So all of those things are what we're doing at the Salvation Army, and we're ready to partner with our community, find ways that we can fill gaps together in our facilities that we have.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mr. Mitchell, how are you?
I'm all right. This is Legislative Bill 2023-10, an Act to amend Chapter 225 of the Wycomico County Code titled Zoning, Section 225-12 entitled Lots Divided by Zoning District Boundary Lines to Allow Use in a Zoning District That Covers the Majority of the Land of a Parcel to Extend Over the Entire Parcel. And Mr. Gary Pusey is here for the planning, if you have questions.
All right.
This is a public hearing.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mitchell. This time, we open the floor for a public hearing on Legislative Bill Number 2023-10. If you have any comments you'd like to make in reference to this legislative bill, come to the podium, please, state your name, your county of residence, and your concerns. Keep in mind, we do have a three-minute limit. That concludes the public hearing on Legislative Bill Number 2023-10. Entertained a motion from council to approve Legislative Bill 2023-10.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a roll call vote. All those in favor, say aye, starting with Councilman Shields.
Aye.
Councilman Merritt?
Aye.
Vice President Baker?
Aye.
Councilman Holloway?
Aye.
Councilman Hastings?
Aye.
Councilman Winn?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Legislative Bill 2023-10 passes unanimously.
And this is another public hearing. This is Legislative Bill 2023-11, an Act to amend Exhibit B, Exhibit C, and Exhibit F for the Annual Budget Appropriation Bill, which was part of Legislative Bill Number 2023-04. And I point out, I believe at one point, it said it was adopted June the 9th, was actually adopted June the 6th, 2023. That should be amended when the council takes it up. To remove the salaries for the Assistant Director of Administration position, the Director of Public Works position, and Deputy Director of Public Works position. This is a public hearing.
Thank you, Andy.
Could we get a little further explanation, Mrs. Hurley? I know there was some Facebook posts out there that said that they were eliminating salaries. We're not eliminating salaries, we're basically moving some salaries.
Yes, so the intent of this legislation is to temporary move the funds into our use of prior year fund balance. Again, this is a temporary move until the positions can be filled properly. And at that time, council can certainly then authorize the funds to be transferred back to those departments when you guys are ready to proceed with that. But this, again, is a temporary move. And I'll also point out that the best practice that was mentioned on the GFOA website is that government should be reviewing their salary and wage budgets throughout the entire year, not just when the budget is being prepared, and then you should be making adjustments as needed.
Now, if we were to eliminate the salaries, that money would basically go back to the citizens, right, as far as lowering taxes? If this money was put back completely? If that was elimination of those salaries, if they were, if that money was not in the budget at all, right?
Oh, if it wasn't in the budget at all?
Correct.
That is correct.
So they're not being eliminated?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
This time, we open the floor for a public hearing on Legislative Bill Number 2023-11. Those that would like to make any public comments in reference to Legislative Bill 2023-11, come to the podium, please, state your name, your county of residence, and your concerns. Keep in mind, please, we do have a three-minute time limit.
Julie Giordano, County Executive. I first want to share my disappointment in this council as I personally sent all of you an email yesterday as a last effort to try to reach a resolution without litigation. But unfortunately, not one of you responded. You didn't even tell me that you got the email. The legislation that you are getting ready to pass is not for the betterment of Wycomico County or its citizens. It is a vengeful, spiteful act to once again try to hurt the executive office, which is what you have done for the past seven months. Defunding positions, whether it's going back to the county, is terrible in optics, especially when two of the positions are currently filled. It's a form of termination which this council does not have the authority to do. Termination is a sole function of the executive branch, except for those positions that fall under the county council, such as Ms. Hurley's position. I am asking you to table this bill this evening, especially because we plan to interview for Public Works Director next week due to recent resumes that have just come in. Thank you.
Dave Cooper, Wycomico County resident. I would like to start just off saying that, first off, that this is my opinion to prevent a third threat of litigation by a member of this council. It's very concerning to me that this county, that as a citizen of this county, that the president and other members of this council have gone around and bragged that the council has approved 33 out of 35 appointments from the executive. If we break it down, you just reappointed numerous positions of people who are already employed here, approved people to serve on volunteer boards, whom of which you never even met, and approved people for vacant positions. If we really break it down, what you have voted down, it's more than two of the 35 positions. In her seven months in office, you've turned down her idea for Public Safety Advisor. You've turned down the idea that a person would not have to have a bachelor's degree, even though five of the seven of you don't have one. You took away her Legislative Aid position. You took away her Public Information Officer, even though it's listed in the charter numerous times that she is to have one. So I hope you all have actually read the charter better than the budget that you passed earlier this year. You allowed public embarrassment of Dan Cox before you voted him, voted him down as Special Counsel, even though the majority of this county voted for him in both primary and general elections to be our governor. So I would think it is safe to say the majority of this county actually wanted him there, unlike the few that spoke that day against him. You attempted to turn down Matt Lightzel as the Director of Admin, even though Julie did follow the process. You told her to, by averting the position and making sure she didn't hire any of her friends. You questioned her contract with Wayne Stralsberg and Paul Ellington. Just last meeting, you turned down her ability to have a non-conflicted attorney. You removed $500,000 from her budget for schools, which was desperately needed because within the last year, this council has removed over $15 million in the Board of Education budget, which, by the way, some of the members of this current council were actually part of that. And in fact, I believe one of you was actually the president. What do all of these things have in common? They were all people or things she knew would help her office be successful. So the fact you sit up here and say that you're not, that this is not personal, is absolutely ludicrous. How can you, how can it not be personal? It's like you're refusing her the tools she feels she needs to be successful. I ask you, why? Do you not want the executive to be successful? The county elected her to do a job. She campaigned, and that job she campaigned for, and the majority of this council is just holding her back. All of you really need to sit back and think about what you're doing tonight, especially with this bill. This is absolutely crazy that you're gonna eliminate, or excuse me, not eliminate, you're gonna defund positions. Where, you know, we keep hearing all this stuff in federal about defunding this and defunding that. This council shouldn't be talking about defunding anything.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper.
Paula Donalds, city and county resident. Shame on all of you, almost all of you. Work with that lady. Work with her. Mr. Holloway, Mr. Cannon, Shane Baker, Jeff Merritt, and Ms. Shane, Shaney Shields, work with that lady. Thank you, James, for sticking up for her.
Thank you, Ms. Donalds.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Good evening, members of the council. I'm Adam, Executive. So I've been asked to speak to the council and the administration regarding changes to the budget and potential cuts of salaries. Forgive me if I don't have all the information. I'll share what I know with a few questions. Director of Public Works, Deputy Director of Public Works, Deputy Director of Administration, why are these positions still not filled? Why are these positions being eliminated through changes to the budget? Who will assume the duties performed by these positions? Scratch the next one, because I already answered my own question. How many positions overall in Wycomico County are vacant? Why? How can the council and/or the executive perform county business for the people of Wycomico County with vacant positions and the elimination of key department heads? The last, the answer to that last question is they, all of you, cannot. The answers to the other questions are owed to the people of the county, those that supported you, those that helped you get elected. I implore you to focus on moving forward together to do the work of and for the benefit of all of the people of Wycomico County. My name's David Cook. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper.
Good evening. My name is Barry Beecham. And the question that I have for every one of you members up here is, if those positions were important enough for the past county executives, then why aren't they important enough for the present county executive? Doesn't make any sense to me, you know? The tools that you guys work with, I've been up here and explained myself before. Jeff, you're in the printing business, printing press that, you know the printing press that you need, you know? Shane, you know the tools that you need to be a police officer. You know, John, you know the rental properties that you need to buy, because you know what you need as far as a tool goes. James, you know as far as a tile saw, which tile saw to buy. What we're talking about here is we're talking about tools. They're the only tools that she has. You're constantly sweeping her legs out from under her. And what really upsets me the most is that several of you are in new positions. Can you imagine being in her position and having the opposition from the people that are supposed to support her? This is the part that I don't understand here, is that, you know, as a county and as a citizen, we look at this, and, and me as a voter, I look at this, and I question what your motives are. I don't, I don't understand. There's no way, the number of people that she's put before you, that they could all be bad. That, that doesn't make any sense to me. I don't, I'm trying to grasp it. I'm trying to grasp why you guys continually vote against the position that she takes. You know, if they're wrong positions, time will tell, you know? Time is going to prove us all right, or it's going to prove us wrong. The question that I always look at is, what's the motive behind what you guys are doing? I don't understand it. I've been up here before, you know, I've spoken and said the exact same words that I just said tonight. But what I really would like for you to all really take a look at is, you know, this county is a nice county. I mean, we've got some really nice people, you know? If these positions were needed to be filled when the past county executives were in the position, then why would you think that, because the experience that she has in this, she's new at this position, why would you think that she wouldn't, she probably needs those even more so than the past county executives? And I just really wish you to really think, rethink refunding or defunding these positions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beech.
My name is Shaw McHume, Wycomico County resident. I'm also the Commission President of the town of Pittsfield. First thing I want to say is that I have a good working relationship with the county executive, and she supports our municipality and municipalities across this county. Without her goals and visions to inspire me to be a better leader in my position, it's helped me be a doer. She's a doer. Something I wish I could say for more people in this room. If this decision's made tonight to temporarily move funding for salaries and positions within her administration, to me, it's nothing more than an obstructionist move based on an egotistical battle rooted in desire for more power. The people of this county elected Julie Giordano to be the county executive to lead for a brighter future and to not go into the pitfalls this county's been in before I was even a resident of the state of Maryland. If this decision goes through tonight to temporarily suspend with maybe we can vote to move that funding back in, which to me, I've been doing this long enough, means that I can say no at any point in time. So essentially, it is stripping the money, because based off of past actions, you're not going to reverse it. So you can say, say what you will, that it's temporary, but I don't see that based off of past actions. The real losers in this are the taxpayers and the citizens of this county. They voted for that woman to be in this position. That's who suffered. That's who's going to suffer in any potential legal battle, because whose money pays for it? It's not yours. Well, part of it is, because you're taxpayers as well. But the taxpayers are the ones that are going to suffer. Actions have consequences. Actions today will have consequences years down the road. I wish people would be able to, you know, see what these municipalities have done and actually attend meetings, and only a few have, I've actually seen in our meetings in the three to four years that I've been the Commission President. I know the executive's been there, and I know Councilman Holloway and Winn have been in our meetings as well. But there are great things going on in our municipalities. And maybe, even though we're a municipality, you can learn something about leadership. As I said before, actions have consequences. And those consequences, when you're a politician or felt at the ballot box, the only thing I'm going to say is, if that decision is made to strip the money from these salaries, the only shame is that we'll have to wait three years to deliver those consequences as citizens of this county.
All right, I'm Colby Thippen, Wycomico County resident, Commissioner President for the town of Hebron. I don't know a lot of the drama, let's say, of what's going on here. I haven't researched it. I'm not savvy on all of it. But what I will say with the public works positions, your guys' public works, Acting Public Works, Public Works Director, anybody in these positions in the past have been a huge asset to the town of Hebron. I'll speak for Hebron. We have two public works guys. They're not directors, they're just guys that are out getting their hands dirty. We don't have experts in the field, per se, that can help us with certain jobs. So we rely on the county to speak with for these things. And you guys have, or they have been, the people in these positions have been very influential for us. I mean, they're people who I can call, I can text, I can get assistance when we need to for different projects. Without these positions, I don't know where the town of Hebron will be. I think I can speak for, for other municipalities as well. We're small. We need help. Our residents need help with these items. Stripping the salaries from these positions is removing the positions. Makes absolutely no sense to me. Makes absolutely no sense to me. If it's a, a personal battle between executive and you guys, something needs to be worked out better than this. So I'll leave that there and I appreciate you guys' time.
The public comments. Yes, sir.
Good evening. It's, it's water, not whiskey, don't know which. Robert Taylor. In a few, few weeks, I'll be a 52-year, come here resident of the county. And within the last several years of that, for several years, I was the council's attorney sitting where Mr. Mitchell is now sitting for many meetings. I think that the council is doing the right thing with this matter. As far as I can tell, and I do have some experience in this because if you'll recall, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Hurley, Mr. Culver died just about three years ago and that ended what is essentially very close to the same situation that we have now with the appointment or quasi-appointment or whatever you care to call it of county officials by the county executive without going through the proper confirmation proceeding. That's what we have now. And until that gets resolved, I think the cutting of the salaries is the right move. Now, I want to elaborate a little bit further, maybe for Mr. Winn's edification. Maryland law in local government, Mr. Winn, does not represent what is called separation of powers. It does not exist. It's not me speaking, it's the Court of Appeals, now called the Maryland Supreme Court, Supreme Court of Maryland. Case law on this. The reason for that is there is no separation of powers clause in the state constitution that pertains to local government. There is a clause that pertains to state government, but not to local government. There's a federal provision as well for separation of powers, as we know. So what we have here is a situation where I believe, I'm not totally certain on this, but I did look into this several years ago, where the county executive cannot sue the county council because of this separation of powers aspect. In other words, you can't sue yourself as an individual. A company can't sue itself. A government can't sue itself. The executive, what we call the executive branch and the legislative branch are actually just divisions of the same county government. So I think we have a real situation here. I don't know how it's going to work out. I could be wrong. I'm not, you know, the legal expert of the world on this, but it's a pretty common principle that you can't sue yourself. That's pretty well known. And so I think what you're doing is right. I imagine some of the, and the audience here will probably boo me, but I think you're making the right decision by going forward with this. Thank you.
May I ask you? The public comments.
Good evening and thank you for your time, county council. My name is Austin Whitehead. I'm the current board president of the Coastal Association of Realtors. I'm here today, I'm not privy to a lot of the things that have happened before, but it came to my attention that multiple positions, high-level positions were being stripped of salaries. And, you know, one thing I, specifically to the board of public works, one thing I look to is the mission statement of the board of public works, which is the enhancement of the equality of life for our citizens by striving to plan, construct, and maintain the county's public works and infrastructure. The public works division oversees the solid waste division, roads division, engineering division, in which many of the county council are in knowledge of is the water and sewer master plan that we've all been trying to work on so closely going forward. I think, I don't, I'm not privy to the inner workings of a lot of these things, but not putting people in place to, in these positions is going to put us back further than we already are. There's a lot of positions that aren't filled, we're behind on a lot of things, and we're really trying to work. Specifically, I have worked closely with the water and sewer issues that we've been having here. So I really would hate to see us get further and further behind. So I don't know what the answer is to all this here, but I do think all the parties need to come together and find a solution that's not going to negatively affect the people. So from the real estate association standpoint, you know, people come to the county, look to move here, and the biggest thing, public works, the infrastructure and the future infrastructure. So holding us up any further is not something I would be in support of. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, council, for taking a moment with all of us. I'm Captain Joe Lappin and I've been here before. I'm not privy to everything that's going on inside the council and everything that's going on inside the inner workings of every department, but what I do see in this circumstance is the people being let down for what they voted for. So I'm not speaking necessarily to the council in essence because council has an opportunity to consider what the people want. I'm speaking to the people. You guys voted Julie in and we knew that when Julie came in, she was a fresh start. She was a person that may not have had experience and that's okay. And I'm going to take that approach that that experience also builds entrepreneurialship in some things we just honored today. It supports community. Community is what we're here for. And I don't know if you guys in the infrastructure, that you have really gone around your communities and seen how your infrastructure is failing. I've been working with Julie a little bit over in Bivav and Nanticoke through some other chains and some people that are involved with the West Side community, and we have some major failures over there in our infrastructure. In our particular case, it's parks in wreck, but that parks in wreck also falls in public works. It also falls in areas where you guys administratively have the opportunity to make change. And in that change that you guys have the opportunity to make, you also have an opportunity to stand for the people on what we voted for. Now, I understand that we don't always get it perfect as a body. It's impossible to get it right as a body. But what we can get right is the opportunity to help each other. And I don't see you guys helping Julie. And I also will speak to you, Julie. I also know that you have to be in contact with your people. It's the people that are behind you that can actually come to the council and say what we're saying tonight. And if you're not involved with the people, then you're not involved with the council. I personally am here to prop up every one of you. And the reason that is, is because I take my, I take my life and I base it on a biblical scripture. And there's probably people that may say, hey, well, you know, we don't, we don't necessarily accept that. I'm going to take one little scripture that I keep in my mind. It's Proverbs 11:14, where there is no guidance, the people fall. You guys are the guiding body for your administrator. You may not agree with what she's doing, or you may not agree with how she's doing it or the approach, and you may not agree as well. But one of the things that I know in this society today, and this might come off a little bit like a sermon, is as we forget as human beings how to humble ourselves. And if you guys can't humble yourselves and work together, then our vote doesn't matter. And the conditions of everything that you're seeing in this county, from the four-wheelers riding down the highways all the way through to dock boards falling off, light poles not being fixed in areas of the community, but yet we want to go ahead and we want to build more parks, but we can't service our community. I'm going to say, let's investigate this just a little bit more. Let's dig a little deeper. Let's prop up each other because if we can prop Julie up, Julie can prop you up, and if she can prop you up, I can prop all of you up as a citizen. And my citizens of Wycomico County, I would expect that you would be able to prop up your administrators, and that's by your vote. Let's get it back to we, the people, please.
How's everybody doing tonight? I'm Mayor Ben Jordan of the town of Delmar, also Wycomico County resident. Just looking at things from a perspective of our town and our residents, I just want to say from Delmar, our consensus is we're not in support of this decision more because it puts a lot of, like even to kind of piggyback off of Colby's comments, it puts a lot more strain on us as the smaller towns in the community to be able to make up that slack. And just from kind of the outside looking in, because I'm, I've sit on this side of the table and I also sit on this side, and I understand that this seems to be a very controversial topic. Not trying to speak to the drama of it, but just trying to speak from the municipalities that this affects, which is Delmar, Pittsfield, Hebron, even Salisbury, Fruitland, Mardella. And I think as we're trying to plan as a community going forward regionally, you know, decisions like this will affect all of us across the board, especially with the sewer project that I think we're all looking forward to, which we're hoping will eventually tie into Delmar if we can get everything going. But, so just from us in Delmar, just want to speak out and say we support all of you, executive, councilmen, but this is something that you, we do not support. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Any other public comments?
Good evening. Monica Brooks, Wycomico County resident. I wasn't going to say anything, but, um, there has been a lot of conflict, you know, back and forth, but I will say this. I just took issue with one of the comments that was said about the, what did it say? The embarrassment of Dan Cox. The, the fact of the matter is that, that, that really has no relevance at all. If people came to speak, and our organization was one of them, and we spoke from the perspective of not what people would think we would typically speak from, but we spoke with some concrete evidence and things that we thought were not beneficial to the county, but, and so when you're in public office, when you're in the limelight, and I've seen it for myself, I got haters online too, you have to have a thick skin. It's just nothing personal, it's just business. The, so if we're going to be in these positions, then we just have to be able to take whatever, you know, comes our way. The, it was, gosh, it was one other thing that I, that I had, that I, that I wanted to say. Oh, it is not the council's job to support the county executive. It's not. It's the council's job to do the council's job and the county executive to do the county executive's job, and they're supposed to work for the benefit of all of Wycomico County. That's it. It's not for them to support or co-sign everything she does, nor is she going to support everything that they do. That's absolutely ridiculous. And if that is the case, then something's wrong with that system. We wouldn't have this division of system if it was meant to be that way. So sometimes there's going to be conflict, sometimes there's going to be disagreement, sometimes there's going to be error, but everything is not personal. Everything is not personal. I need people to hear that everything is not personal. So at the end of the day, whatever needs to be done, you know, this is just an area I'm not getting into the weeds with. I have my passionate areas I get into the weeds with, like education and, and things like that. But at the end of the day, everybody needs to do what they are supposed to do, know their job, do their job, and think about the residents that put you in the positions that you're in.
Ms. Brooks? Any other public comments?
Good evening. My name is Katrina Purnell. I'm a resident of the county. I wasn't here to two previous meetings to know, but I've been listening and reading things in the newspaper and online. I have but one question. What does the county charter say that can and cannot be done? Is the, that's second one. Is the county council following what the charter says? And if it is, I'm, I'm at a loss. I wish that we could use our time more valuable for things that are more important. We have crime in our streets. We have drug addictions. We have parents that need help. We have a problem with housing. I'm only asking for someone to explain that to me and let us follow the charter. Thank you.
Good, uh, good evening, council. My name's Dallas Baker. So as far as I'm aware, I'm the last serving approved public works director for the, for the county. Thought long and hard about whether to say anything or not. So a lot of people ask me in the years since I've left, why'd you leave? And, and I can tell you a lot of that came stemmed from, not from salaries, but from drama. This position that's, needs to be filled is one that many people don't know, you have to go up every four years and be reappointed. That's the way our charter says. So every four years you have to come up and make sure that you're balancing between the needs of the council and the needs of executive. That's not a tough job to do, or that is a tough job to do. I can tell you, anybody that's looking for stability, it's, it's, it's a tough job. And, you know, no one wants to work in a situation where you're caught between this type of drama. And, you know, I applaud those who do. I mean, there are a lot of department heads up here who are, good lord, I sympathize with you all. But, you know, someone brought up, what's the motive? And I think, maybe this is just my opinion, I feel like the, the motive is that the council would like to see this county back to a council form of government and that the objective is to stymie progress as much as possible until the citizens say, we've had enough, let's go back. I don't know if I'm right or not, but if that's the case, you know, when you look at, we've had these same issues under executive Culver with our HR director, with our lawyer. Now we're having it here with the public works director. If that's the case, if it's the council's push to get us back to that form of government, just, just put it on the ballot. Let's vote. Let's vote and say, okay, you know, we, years ago it was voted for the executive, whether that was for good or for bad, if that's the case, let's just put it on there. But the reality is, regardless of where, how that turns out, the problems that we're facing right now are still going to be there, whether they're on the executive plates or the council's plate. Problems like the landfill that's filling up, problems like getting our roads and our bridges fixed and getting our ferries back in the water at the time they matter. So those problems are still going to be there for whoever's there, and they're going to be there for the, for the citizens as well. So I, I really feel like we need a public works director to, to guide and get these things moving. Some of these projects have languished for years now, and we need to see that progress made and moved forward. So I just hope that we'll keep the money there, get somebody in the position and, and see the county succeed because it's a great place to live, it really is. And so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bakers. Any other public comments? Seeing that, and that concludes the public hearing on Leslie Bill number 2023 dash, I'll say 11. Entertained motion from council to approve.
I would like to make a motion to, I would like to make a motion to table this resolution. I think that we all need to sit down and rethink our decisions here. I would like to ask, why, why are we doing this?
I believe there's a motion.
No, 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 no. I made a motion to table this and let's have a discussion.
You're seriously out of order. It's not a motion to table. If you want a motion to postpone, that's fine, it requires a second. If you want a motion to postpone, that's fine, it requires a second. That's what you want, right? You want to-
Yeah.
Okay, so it's a motion to postpone, not to table. If it's a motion to table, we have to bring it, we have to discuss it within this same meeting.
Right, so-
It's a motion to postpone.
A motion to-
Postpone.
Can we make a motion to postpone, and is there a second?
We need a second.
And this is how your council votes?
The motion, the motion does not- Excuse me, sir. Excuse me. So the motion does not pass due to the lack of a second. Moving forward, entertaining motion from Council to approve Legislate Bill Number 2023-11.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion to second. Any discussion?
Yeah, why are we doing this? Can we get an explanation on why we're removing the salaries? Matter of fact, is that even legal, Andy, Andrew?
Yes.
How is it legal?
Well, because it is.
It's giving you a legal opinion.
The council has the ability to delete-
What's the county attorney-
Let him speak.
Hold on, I have the floor.
You asked a question, let it speak.
What does the county attorney think about this?
I don't know.
Do we have his opinion, or are we just going off of yours?
Well, you can ask him. Mr. Wilbur's here.
Mr. Wilbur, if you have a legal opinion, I figured we might as well get all the legal opinions that we can before we go down this route.
I think Paul Wilbur, county attorney. I think on this legislation, the biggest question I would have is, when it's passed, it's going to, and becomes effective, it's going to amount to a termination of the deputy administrator. And is that, under the charter, you know, it's an executive, that's an executive power to terminate that position, but it will be effectively a termination. No salary, no position. That's the biggest legal question I have about this legislation.
Well, I guess the question, you were asked a question, but you're asking a question. So I guess the question is, what Mr. Wen asked, what we're doing, is it legal to do?
And I'm going to say that I can give an opinion on it, but I don't have that opinion written up for tonight.
Right, okay. So-
One of the things that I might say, Mr. Wilbur just said this would, in effect, remove someone from a position, but then again, there has been no one confirmed for that position. So in effect, they're not there now.
Well, isn't that up to-
Should not be.
Isn't that up to the judge's side because of the interpretation of the charter problem? I mean, because the county attorney says that they're employed, and you're saying that they're not, so-
He didn't actually say they're employed, and we've been down this before. He has an opinion, he's given that to you in writing, I've given that opinion, I believe my predecessor gave you an opinion tonight.
Right.
So-
Excuse me, sir.
I mean, you're aware of the issue concerning whether the person in that current position went through the proper submission at a legislative session and was confirmed? And you know that that factually did not happen. That's how we got to this place.
I think that should be up to an arbitrator, and in my opinion, you know, we're denying the executive to even have funding to take this to court, to get this figured out. How is that right? I mean, shouldn't we have abstained from voting to giving her money for a lawyer? Isn't that a conflict of interest?
Councilman Wen, the legislative bill that's on the floor right now is referenced to the funding of the two positions, not attorneys.
Right, and it's all tied together, though. I mean, it's, this is all tied together.
Any other comments, questions?
Yeah, this is, I would like to say that I fully disapprove of this. I think we're going backwards. If we remove these positions, we're pushing our county backwards. We need Public Works, we need people in these positions, and if we go ahead and cut these funds, good luck trying to find someone to come to this county and work for us. She said she's got somebody coming in next week for an interview for Director of Public Works, and we're gonna cut the funding.
Josh.
That sounds great. I mean, are we gonna, are we gonna cut the funding? Is that what we're gonna do, or are we gonna try and, you know, work this out together, you know, instead of having a public embarrassment?
Josh.
Just a process question, I guess. First of all, I should say, so the current situation, obviously, this bill is about trying to remove the funding from the positions the council has said they did not want to move forward. The council has the ability to say up or down, yes or no, on a particular, in particular individuals and particular employees, whether they want to move forward. The council basically decided not to go forward with two individuals, so that's why we're in the current situation. The disagreement is whether or not they can continue to be funded if the county, basically the, to be clear, I probably will never be clear on this, but I'll try to be clear, just so everyone's on the same page, and we're all on the same page. The situation is basically, the county council feels like its only real option in order to make sure that we get, the only real option that we have is basically to decide to pull the funding temporarily until we can actually have different nominees put forward. So I guess the obvious question would be, if the county council tonight decided to move forward with this, then I guess, and let's say tomorrow, the county executive comes forward with two new names for two new individuals for the council to consider, how long before we could make sure that the money was put back, that we are there to then move forward with the nominee and actually go forward with the regular process? So once again, if we did, if the council did move forward tonight to move, remove the funding, and tomorrow, if the county executive did put forward two new names for the council to consider, how long before we could then put the money back in and then move forward, is just as we would normally?
If I can speak to that first, if it were to happen on that time, and I know that's an example, but it wouldn't be effective. Person would be hired before the cut became effective and steps could be taken, but there is a possibility of fronting the money from the contingency, but I actually think I was looking for, I wrote it down, I can't find it, but I think it's Charter 708, maybe. Anyway, there's a provision that allows the, at the executive's request, the council to approve a loan from unencumbered funds to take care of something like this, and that can be done by resolution. Now that has to be, then what would happen would be, there would be, there would be a bill to put this money back, it would come from that same pot of funds, that same unencumbered fund, the undesignated fund, which is where this money will go to when it comes out of the budget. So basically, you'd be borrowing from the same fund, which is eventually going to be back in the budget. There's also the possibility of doing it through a supplemental appropriation, but that is a bill, so you would have a possible lag in there. But it's, we're not talking about months or anything to do that.
Yeah, try to, go ahead, Josh.
Mr. Mitchell, and to be clear, to understand everyone's on the same page as far as separation of powers, the county council does have the ability to approve or deny certain employees that come forward to be appointed, correct?
Absolutely, in fact, it's a obligation to-
And those separation of powers are for specific reasons, right? That was not, that wasn't just put in the last year or two.
And that's not the separation of powers that Mr. Taylor was talking about, that's somewhat different, but in the, I think it was in 2016-
How is that different?
I believe in two, it's not the same thing, Mr. Wen. That 2000, in 2016, I believe it was, the general public had the right to vote on a referendum to approve a change to the charter, and that change in Section 315 of the charter was twofold. It added, it changed from 30 days to 45 days, the, wait a minute, here it is, thank you very much. It says, this was what the ballot question was, "To amend the county charter to extend the time for the council to act to confirm or reject any appointment by the county executive of the Director of Administration, the head of a department, and the executive branch or a member of the Board or Commission from 30 days to 45 days from submission, and to require submission at a legislative session of the council." And that came about because of some issues that occurred before 2016. And that's what's happening again, is that the two names that we're dealing with were not submitted at a legislative session. So the council has never formally acted on them.
Let me, if I could, let me try to, try to give a little bit of history here, at the same time as we try to explain the council's position. The council agrees without question, it's an unfortunate set of circumstances, we certainly do realize that, without doubt. One clarification is, no, we are not eliminating the positions at all, they're not being eliminated. And third, I'd like to say, we are not obstructionists. Again, we've stated before that this council has approved 33, 34 submissions that have come before the council in a legislative session, including Mr. Bunky Lufman, who was one of the first ones, that was submitted in legislative session and approved in legislative session. So the council is working under whatever circumstances are possible to work with the executive to get these appointments done and approved. Now, you can't take away the fact that the council may or may not decide to agree with the executive on some of the appointments that are made. That's what, again, that's what our responsibility is, that is our prerogative. The first appointment that came to us, or the first recommendation that came to us was for the Deputy Director of Administration. It was done in a closed session, which is not a legislative session, and it was done in a closed session as a courtesy to the administration and as a courtesy to the applicant.
If I can interrupt you. It was also requested that it be a closed session by Mr. Lufman.
Per county president's rules.
No, excuse me, you're out of order, executive, you're out of order. Adam, executive, you're out of order, you're out of order, thank you.
You fit out of order. Yeah, you're hearing one side.
You're out of order, I'm sorry. You made your comments in public comment.
Would you like to come to the table and speak?
James should not run the meeting, thank you, okay?
Maybe we should change that.
Point being, and I'll say again, that the, as Mr. Mitchell said, that the closed session was required, was requested of the council. So we held that. At no time has the county council or the president of the council ever gone to the executive or gone to Mr. Lufman and said, I know you've submitted this, but we're not going to put it on the table, we're not going to accept it, never. So this was in closed session, so we held the closed session. Let's not lose sight of the issues. So we were, we were meeting in closed session as a courtesy to the applicant, because you don't really want to publicly discuss a person's history, or their, you know, their shortcomings, or their, you know, whatever there might be in public. So you do it in closed session, there's a reason for that. After meeting in closed session with Mr. Lightzel, the council, very simply, did not, was not in favor of this appointment. We felt he was an excellent guy, a very nice guy, his background was exemplary in law enforcement, but we knew that what we were looking for, for the most part, was someone who could run the county, someone that could, that recognized what it meant to run an airport, or solid waste, or roads, or the Board of Education. There was no background whatsoever for any of those particular issues. It was specifically law enforcement. So the council felt this is not going to be in the best interest of the public, and that's our right as a body of seven here, that is our right to make that decision. Well, no submission ever came back to the council in a legislative session, and I was kind of surprised, I mentioned to Mrs. Hurley at one point in time, she said, you know, they're not advertising this job, I don't understand why they're not advertising it. Well, after a 45-day period of time, next we know, it's been announced that Mr. Lightzel has been hired. And we're saying, well, you can't do that, because as is clear, as Mr. Mitchell read, and as I have in front of me here, Section 315, which requires a confirmation of appointments, again, says, "If the council fails to act to confirm or reject an appointment within 45 days of its submission to the county council at its legislative session by the county executive, the appointment shall stand approved." It was never done. There was never an appointment, there was never a submission issued, this county council in a legislative session, never. So as far as the council's concerned, the rejection of that appointment stood and still stands. The second issue there was, but, the individual is working for the county right now, and the taxpayers are paying for this, and this council does not feel as if this is a qualified individual, despite the fact he's a very nice individual. The second position involved a Public Works employee. This employee was appointed acting director for 90 days, no council approval is necessary, it's fine. Now, at the end of that 90-day period, there was a closed session in reference to this individual being appointed in the director's position, and the council did not want to move forward with that. We had our reasons, and believe me, we had our reasons. We cannot explain all of those reasons, because they're personnel matters, that we cannot share with the public when it's been discussed in a closed session, but we honestly and sincerely felt it was not the best choice. What happened was, the executive did not respond to the council, and a submission was never put into legislative session, and yet, the individual was appointed as an acting deputy director. Now you have to understand something, the acting deputy director is a position that's not recognized in the county charter, is not recognized in the Personnel Manual, nor any other form of Wycomico County documentation. One branch of government, in my opinion, and I think in this council's opinion, one branch of government can't simply make up or create a position at their own discretion. The public doesn't want to see that. They'd rather see it done publicly in the light of day. You cannot create as many titles or positions that might suit your needs while ignoring public policy or public law, or public law. This individual is still being paid today by the taxpayers of Wycomico County for a position, acting deputy director, that does not exist in this county. So keep in mind, we're not trying to be argumentative, we did not feel this individual was the right person for this job. So again, here we are tonight, we're responding to what I would consider to be several unorthodox and very unacceptable measures undertaken by the administration.
John, you can say it as many times as does the county attorney.
These are measures that we felt were taken to circumvent the county charter, the county council, and, which is actually the governing document of the county, of the individuals that reside in Wycomico County, the citizens of Wycomico County. Continuing, I would simply say that what we're doing tonight, again, is simply a measure of exercising our obligation and our right, decisions that we don't really like, but we feel as a body, it is in the best interest of the public. It's a democratic process, you have an executive legislative form of government. The county council, as a body, no personal vendettas here, the county council, as a body, a legislative body, determined that these two individuals were not going to be in, you know, best suited for these positions, that we felt were very important positions for Wycomico County and the citizens of Wycomico County. So we exercised our right, and we simply said, no, we don't think it's going to work, do us a favor, you can certainly come back, bring someone else in, however you might do it, let's get this done the right way, let's get it done the legal way, and we'll move forward. So I think that those inclinations of the council were very clear, not to move forward with the appointments whatsoever. But the appointments were made, the appointments weren't made, but the hiring process was followed through, what we would consider to be illegally, and the payments are being made, which we consider to be illegally. I don't think one individual, whatever they might want or what they might desire, I don't think they can supersede the governing body as a whole, nor the will and the laws of the public. Again, I don't want to lose sight of the fact that the council has approved 33 appointments, formally requested by the administration. And these legal processes cannot be abandoned when it's just not convenient for one party or the other. So again, I'd say we need to continue on. It is unfortunate that we have to cut the funding, it will go into reserves, and at any point in time, the council can bring it back, once the qualified people are in this position. But we had to take these extreme measures, because public taxpayers' dollars are being spent to pay two individuals that this council considers to be working in this county without the proper authorization. That is it.
Mr. Councilor, can I ask you a question?
I wish you could, but we can't take it from the floor, Andy. Thank you. Any other comments, Council?
Yeah, I-
I just want-
Go ahead. No, no, go ahead.
I just want to say this to some folks there in the audience. I'm a person that believes in treating people the way I want to be treated. I'm a person that believes in treating people the way I want to be treated. I think that I'm, I always say I'm spoiled by being on the city council, and how we hard people, we had a choice of two or three applications. Now, if I was going to have brain surgery, I wouldn't want a dentist to operate on me. So, we want the best of the best for to represent this county. And if we continue to do he say, she said, and all this high school drama, people definitely, I agree with the young man, said, "People don't want to come here. We're going to become a laughingstock like the city of Salisbury became, a laughingstock in the state of Maryland." We need to learn how to work together and be a team, because what we're doing, we're working for the county. I don't care if you're Republican, Democrat, Green Party, I don't care nothing about that stuff. But we need to work together, and best of the perfect world would be, and it's not in the charter, unfortunately, if John, Laura, and the county executive and her assistant will look at applications together and choose a person and bring at least two to the table that we can pick from.
Can I sit in on your internal auditors, too?
I mean, I don't know.
Madam Executive, you not have right to interrupt the council.
And see, and that's another thing, that's another thing, that's another thing. We bring this argument and disturbing and cutting cross people. That's called respect, and I don't see that here, respect. I'm talking about respect, I'm talking about respect from people that are interrupting when somebody talks. When somebody's talking, I didn't interrupt.
Excuse me. I didn't want to leave the room, but you were interrupting the legislative session.
I didn't interrupt nobody when they were talking, but I think respect is what's needed. And there's always two sides to every story. Now, we have the county executive supporters, but I've also had calls that agreed with what was going on, and asked questions about what's going on in the landfill. Yes, we need people in the landfill. We have the wastewater treatment plan. That is going to be difficult. That's not going to happen overnight. I might be dead and gone when it actually happens, because I dealt with wastewater with the city of Salisbury, and we had to do it all over again. Cost millions of dollars. It cost $60 million the first time, $77 million the next time. And see, this is the kind of stuff that you, when you work together, you get an understanding. This, I'm still in the learning process. Everybody, now, some of them are not. I'm new to this, and I have to learn how the county does stuff versus the city, because I still got the city mentality to sometime. But, you got to work together as a team. It doesn't need to be a party against the party and all that, because when I got elected, I'm, I'll tell you, I'm a Democrat. And when I got elected, people said, "Oh, God, you got five, five Republicans and two Democrats." We get along, believe it or not, we get along. James, his learning, bless his heart. He's, he's like a kid. He's like a little kid, and I took him on a tour of the West Side. He means well. I know he means well. I know he does, and I don't have no problem disagreeing with him, and I'm not going to agree with him, he's not going to agree with me. But at the end of the day, we go home and we still be friends and learn from one another. That's what we're supposed to do. Learn from one another and accept defeat and accept the good times, because you're going to win some and you're going to lose some. And that's how the cookie crumbles. Thank you very much.
Vice President Baker.
So, this comes down to the charter. I think the citizens of the county want us to follow the charter. I've read it several times. I don't think it was followed. Our council says it wasn't followed. I'm charged with making a decision. If I believe that this charter wasn't followed, and it's, I'm one of seven, but if it's my job to make an appointment or not an appointment, or confirm an appointment or not, if the charter wasn't followed, and those two people shouldn't be in those positions, I've got a decision to make. That's why I'm going to make the decision I'm going to make tonight. I do think those positions are needed. I don't want them done away with. I will, for lack of other words, refund them when it's time, but these two people should, shouldn't have been put in this position. The council, the executive's office, and the people should not be in this position. It's a terrible position to be in, but we got to deal with it. That's where we're at tonight. We're going to deal with it. Hopefully, we're going to get two people that are qualified, that are going to be appointed or confirmed, and we're going to move forward. I heard a lot of things in here tonight from people talking about moving forward and working together. That's very important. We have to work together. If we don't, we become stagnant. We got to work together. So, I think this is a move that needs to take place, a vote that needs to take place, so that we can move forward, get two individuals in the right places, and move forward. But, again, I'm voting the way I'm voting tonight, because I read the charter. The way I interpret it, it wasn't followed. Our legal counsel says it wasn't followed. That's where I'm at.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I think Paul's got a different opinion on that, on that interpretation. I do believe that.
Paul's not the counsel.
Right, he's the county attorney. And also, I would like to say that the people that she brought forward are qualified. They are very much qualified. And they actually sent us an email saying, the executive sent us all an email, saying that these individuals will have no problem doing it in an open session for the public to see why we're scrubbing this. And I, I mean, I think that would be fair, at least, to have some sort of due process to see why we're not accepting qualified candidates. Is that, is that hard, is that, is that a bad thing to ask? Why, I mean, we didn't even give the executive a reason why. Shouldn't she know why we're not accepting these people? Or how can she do better if we're not giving her a reason why we're not accepting these people?
I think actually, she was given a reason.
She was giving a consensus not to move forward in an email during a closed session.
James, listen to the, listen to the attorney.
Yes, and that contained two, two reasons. I know for one of them, I can't, I'm not sure about the other. And, and the executive responded that she understood, actually, sort of took the council to task, saying that you can't have an official vote in a closed meeting, which is correct. That's why it was consensus, not a vote. And that even if it had been voted, it would not have counted. But then she never brought it up in an open session, so that's where we are.
You know, I want to say something. You are, you are correct. One of them is highly qualified. Mr. Lightzel, I read his resume. I've been in law enforcement a long time. He has a stellar resume for someone that's applying for a job in law enforcement. Stellar. He would have been hired in a minute if I was on the interview board, and I'd pick him in a minute, not to be third in charge of Wycomico County. I want somebody more well, I'm speaking for myself, not the council. I want somebody more well-rounded in government, other than in.
Didn't he check all, didn't he check all the boxes that he needed for the position? I mean, I thought he checked all the boxes, and, you know, okay, this is, this is part of the problem, is our council wants to pick the people, it seems like.
We're not trying to pick. It's confirmation.
Chaney's just said she wanted to pick.
You're confirming or not.
You just said you wanted a specific person.
I, I said, that's how I voted. That's, that's why I chose to vote that way. I read his resume. I knew the position that he was going for.
And he's qualified.
I didn't think he was qualified for that position. Now, I respect your opinion, and if you think he's highly qualified, that's how you need to vote. I'm going to vote the way that I feel my constituents, and, and as long as I'm sitting in this position, I'm going to vote how I feel like I need to vote.
You have a lot.
And I didn't think he was qualified for that position. Hence the reason we did it in closed session, so that we have these discussions in a public forum.
Should we have a closed session with the executive, so we can go over all of this? Because she clearly doesn't know why. I mean, it is a personnel issue, and it's her personnel. That's, that's, right? Am I wrong? I mean.
It's her personnel, actually. It's her and the community, it's the taxpayers.
Right.
And we need to get this wrapped up and solved and fixed as fast as possible.
It's very simple, James. We had two people that applied, that were, that were, that were recommended. They weren't submitted, but they were recommended. The council, as a body of seven, six of the seven chose not to do so. There's nothing wrong with that process. It's part of what the decision was that was made. I don't want to beat this to death. We understand that you're going to approve it, James.
All right, all right. I just want to make sure we're not, like, discriminating on these people, you know? Hey, listen, listen, we did this in closed session, we gave no reason, and everyone here is saying, "I don't want the public to know why." And the people that applied for these positions have no problem with their laundry being hung out. It's the council that wants to keep this behind closed doors.
There are things the council cannot say in public without being subject to liability. That's why it's done in closed session. That is, that is the reason.
And if I may, Counselor Winn, that's why, when it comes down to the actual submission, it has to be done in an open session, has to be done in a legislative session. The closed session is just to get some background and things like that, but the actual confirmation or rejection has to happen in a legislative session. The name has to be submitted at a legislative session. That never happened for these two people.
So, is the interpretation correctly? A closed session, so that the public knows. A closed session is more like a interview, so we can ask questions.
In this particular case, yes.
Feedback, we can look over his resume, those kinds of things. Then, once it's presented in a legislative session, that's where we take a vote amongst the people.
Right, and, and the closed session's not required. I mean, Mr. Wilber was not.
Right.
He was not in a closed session. So, the executive is to, is to submit the name at a closed session. That's the words in, in the 315.
If they choose to.
Well, when they're, when they're submitting somebody for the nomination, to be confirmed, it has to be done. And, and you also got to keep in mind that not every open session is a legislative session. It has to be a legislative session. You can't vote in an open work session.
Maybe we should get a retired judge to look at this, somebody with some experience in judging this stuff, because clearly, the county attorney disagrees, the council attorney disagrees. After this, we're just going to go into a lawsuit, we're going to go to court, and then, guess what? The money that we're spending on a public works director, we're just going to be blowing 10 times as much money in your tax dollars to take this to court, and the only people that are going to win are the lawyers.
James, you keep overlooking, you keep overlooking the one issue.
The interpretation.
The personalities of the executive, the government.
The interpretation of the charter is what's being overlooked, and none of the council wants it, none of the council wants it interpreted by a judge or, or by a court. We just want to go ahead and cut the funding and not let her, we just want to tie her hands. It's, it's just a little frustrating. I'm trying to, trying to work the county in a forward direction. If we go ahead and do this, we're going to be walking backwards.
I think it's quite clear. Mr. Wilber represents her office or the county. He's giving his opinion. Mr. Mitchell.
Right.
Represents the council. We're going to make our decision.
I know, I know.
If it ends up in court, the judge will rule who's right or who's wrong. But we got to get to a point where we can, you're right, we can move forward. And I think the answer here is going to be, we, we're at a stalemate. She believes she's right, we believe we're right, we can bicker back and forth all day.
For clarity, though, if the same two names were put forward to the council today, they would be denied. So, regardless, we just need two new names, and we can move on.
Qualifications.
And I think you're, that's what you're looking, James. That is the issue.
Okay, so, you know, I didn't want to bring this up, but everyone here thinks that having a council budget is legal in closed session on this council. And from what I understand, that's not legal. And our county attorney, Letherson, is one of those, and I can't find anywhere in the Opens Meeting Act where that's legal. As a matter of fact, in the exemptions, there is no exemption for a budget meeting. Am I right?
I'm not quite sure what the, I don't know what.
And as a matter of fact, that same budget meeting.
Budget meetings are frequently held.
February 21st.
James, we're.
No, 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 no. John, John, John.
I'd say a bill in reference to the annual budget.
I'm just, I'm just trying to give people some idea on, you know, we've got our attorney that led us into an illegal closed session on the budget. That's what happened.
Who are you talking about?
There's no, there's no closing statement on this. I signed.
You can have, you can have a budget discussion in closed session.
Right.
It happens all the time and every level. Do you have to vote on the budget in open session?
And, and we didn't make any decisions in open session. All the decisions were in closed session, including adding about $150,000 of our tax money for this future lawsuit that we're getting ready to have, probably tomorrow.
Mr. President.
I'd like to wrap up. Yes, Ms. Hurley.
I just want to mention that that budget session that he's referring to was actually an administrative closed session, which is a little different than your exceptions under the Open Meetings Act for your standard closed sections.
Right.
And then, we did have discussion in open about the council's budget, if you guys recall. I believe that was done during the budget recap session, so that was also discussed publicly.
Ms. Hurley, any other comments? With the roll call, all those in favor of legislative bill number 2023-11, say aye. We'll begin with Councilman Shields.
Aye.
Councilman Merritt.
Aye.
Vice President Baker.
Aye.
Councilman Holloway.
Aye.
Councilman Hastings.
Aye.
Councilman Winn.
Yep.
And share votes aye. Legislative bill number 2023-11 passes by a vote of six to one. Thank you. Good evening, Ms. Hurley.
Okay, good evening, council members. Next on the agenda is a public hearing on resolution number 99-2023. This is to amend the fiscal year 2024 operating and capital budget to approve funding for the renovation. Yes.
Hold on a second. Talk about that, if you, if you could, thank you.
Yes, so, next on the agenda is a public hearing on resolution number 99-2023. This is to amend the fiscal year 2024 operating and capital budget to approve funding for the renovation of the Piedmont parking lot for the Salisbury Ocean City Wycomico County Airport in the amount of $443,269, and to rename the aircraft parking, ramp project as the Piedmont parking lot project. A public hearing notice was posted on the county's website and published in the local newspaper, and we have Mr. Tony Rudy here, who is our Director of Department of Aviation, if you have any questions.
Ms. Hurley, at this time, we open the floor for public hearing on resolution number 99-2023. If you have any comments that you'd like to make in reference to this resolution, come to the podium, please. State your name, your county of residence, and your concerns.
Good evening again, Robert Taylor again. I'm not speaking for or against this particular matter, but I think that at some point, we need to have an overall study of the funding of the airport. It has certainly become, one way to put it bluntly, is a sinkhole for money. Now, I would be interested in what does Piedmont pay for these improvements that we're doing? And how does that relate to their rent? I don't know the answers to these questions. I'm just simply bringing them up. But I do understand from some friends that are in larger towns that have larger airports, that it is not unusual for airlines to pay at least some of the capital improvement costs of things. I'm just simply suggesting it, and I think it would be a good idea that we look at that overall and not just keep going down this road. It kind of reminds me a little bit of the musical, maybe you saw the movie Damn Yankees. Remember the song, "Whatever Lola Wants, Lola Gets"? It kind of seems like whatever Piedmont wants, Piedmont gets, and that's just been my experience over the years. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Any other public comments? Seeing none, that concludes the public hearing on resolution number 99-2023. Entertained a motion from council to approve resolution 99-2023.
No move.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carried. Resolution 99-2023 passes unanimously.
Next is a submission of Mr. Matthew Conahay as an ex officio member of the Wycomico Behavioral
Good evening, Bunky Luffman, Director of Administration of Wycomico County. On, well, just a little, this is a, Mr. McConahay would be serving on the Behavioral Health Council. This has been before the council, before when Brandy Wink was put on.[1782.95] This has been before the council, before when Brandy Wink was put on. We sent the memo on January 26th, and then that was on the consent agenda that you voted on to place her on the council on February 21st. Now, Mr. McConahay has taken over as the county health officer, so we submitted his name on January, or I'm sorry, July 11th. It was received by county council office on July 12th, and I was asked to be here today. So Mr. McConahay is here, right behind me.
Thank you, Mr. Lufman.
Okay, next is resolution number 100-2023. This is confirming the appointment of Mr. Matthew Conahay as an ex officio member of the Wacomico Behavioral Health Council.
Any motion from council to approve resolution 100-2023?
To move.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion's carried, resolution 100-2023 passes unanimously.
Next.
Thank you, Mr. Lufman.
Next is resolution number 101-2023. It's amending the fiscal year 2024 budget position control document identified as Exhibit E, to amend the salary of the manager building maintenance position. And I believe Ms. Pam Owen here, Director of Finance, if you have any questions.
Entertained a motion from council to approve resolution 101-2023.
To move.
Second.
Second.
Discussion, you have the floor. Good evening.
Good evening. This position was funded in the budget for six months. The sheriff's office, as well as general services, has requested that this position be funded starting in September to allow a hire in the position as the building is being finished, so that they can learn the systems as the building is being turned over to the county.
Any questions from anyone?
Um, I haven't.
Joe.
Who does the hire on that? Does the sheriff do the hire, or the?
So it is a sheriff's department position. I believe it's going to be a joint, it's going to be a joint interview process between general services, who would have the knowledge of who the person, the qualifications of the person, but it also has to be somebody that can actually work in the sheriff's department, sheriff's office, sorry.
Background situations, yeah.
Yep.
I see that head going up and down over there.
Todd Richards, Major Richardson and Pate Matthews are both here.
Thank you. Questions from anyone? All those in favor of resolution 101-2023, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion passes, resolution, motion to confirm resolution passes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. President, that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Hurley. This time, we open the floor for public comments. If you have any comments you'd like to make, please come to the podium, please. State your name, your county of residence, and your concerns. Keep in mind, we do have a three-minute maximum limit. Thank you very much.
Man, we need that in churches when we preach, to keep us on time. Hello, everyone. My name is David James. I'm a resident here in Wacomico County, and most of the council knows me as the guy from the west side of the county. I have some concerns, and one of my big concerns is, the reason I'm even around, people see me during the election, the reason I'm around is because I started a church down in Weytipp One. And instead of starting a church, I heard people talking about roads not done, ditches not done, things not done. So I had to reach out. And during the election season, people made promises. People made promises not to me, but to their community. Now, I don't know if anybody knows this or not, but before God, when you make a vow, you better not break it. There are people that, we have trash in different corners down there, and I'm pretty sure John, you all guys saw it on our group. They're, they're being told by somebody when they called the sheriff's department, that there's not a roads department. Now, I'm just going to say it like this, all right? I'm not going to play sides with legislative or executive. Julie made it, I mean, made a promise that she was going to get certain things in certain offices. You guys told me the same thing. Am I right? You're going to make, you're doing things not just for District Two, but for everywhere, right?
Qualified, right?
Yeah, whatever. Whatever y'all make qualifications, whatever, okay? My concern is, eight months, this is August, nothing's done. DAF tanks, we haven't addressed. There are still no broadband. Of course, I had, thank you for reaching out to me, and you said, within the next year and a half, we should get broadband down there. I pray that happens. Why? Because people need it. District One and District Two works hand in hand. When we're done fighting over positions, and rather than that, we're going to get this county on track, let's find out why Muddy Hole is known, is also known as Negro Island. Also, another name, and how come that has not been addressed? John, Joe, you've been here 15 years. I love you guys, but I want some answers. Why are we not addressing the real issues, instead of fighting over stuff that doesn't matter? Rather, if you're, I got 45 seconds, awesome. Rather you get Joe Blow or Joe Smo to get the job done, if they got the qualifications, let's not dig around just because of political backgrounds. Who cares about political backgrounds? God doesn't, and that's for both sides. I hope you will consider that, and considering, let's get this county back going. Have a great one.
Thank you, Mr. James. Any other public comments? Mr. Taylor, haven't you been up here twice already?
I'm getting worn out.
Just steps in.
Just a few thoughts on the discussion that followed on the salary cuts. I think Mr. Winn needs to recognize that this would not be, we wouldn't be where we were if Ms. Giordano had not done what she did. It's that simple. We're really back where we were with Bob Culver about three, three and a half years ago. Same thing. And I do believe, and I suggest that both Mr. Mitchell and Mr. Wilber need to look into this, but I do not think that one part of the county government can sue another part. So I really believe that to move on, the best thing for Ms. Giordano to do is to find qualified personnel for these positions, and to appoint them, go through the normal process that's provided in the charter, and hopefully, we'll have appointments that will be confirmed. That will end this situation that she has essentially created, not this council. Now, the real reason I came tonight, or the basic reason, was because of the closure of the transfer station at the Civic Center, which, I mean, I went away on the 12th for vacation, first one since COVID, and this kind of stuff happens. I mean, maybe I shouldn't leave on vacations, but the, I mean, I just can't believe it. Now, I understand, there's been trash put there, there was a picture with some mattresses, and, and yes, you do see that from time to time. I go by that station probably, on average, about two and a half times a week over a 52-week period. It's not far from my house. I don't want to put my, my glass bottles, plastic bottles, newspapers, and cardboard on the street. I've got a lot of it, and that's number one. Number two, it gets spread around sometimes, those boxes get, turns over, it gets out on the street. So I take it by there. I go by there two or three times a week and drop it off. I have never seen anything like the picture of the mattresses. I'm not saying it doesn't happen now and then, I'm sure it does. But most of the time, the trash that's there is because the county does not empty the bins once they become filled. It just, that's the way it is, that's been that way for some years now. And that should be reopened. So should the one over on the west side of the county. Those two transfer stations serve maybe 30, 35, possibly 40% of the people around the county, because Salisbury is the center of population. And to think that you have to go down to Fruitland, which I did today, I had to go down to Fruitland for other reasons, went to the station on Walnut Tree Road, which frankly, isn't even convenient for the people in Fruitland. It's a mile and a half off of Route 13 to the west. Most of the population in Fruitland lives on the east side of Route 13. So, I mean, we really need to look into this and get this situation straightened out, because recycling is, is a goal that we should be promoting, not hindering. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Any other public comments?
Thank you. My name is Joe White, and I'm a resident of Wacomico County. I wanted to first thank Council President Cannon, Councilman Merritt, and Councilman Holloway for taking the time last Thursday to join the community, just like we're here tonight in Maradella, to talk about what is being built as the West Metro Park. My ask is that you continue as a whole body, as I did a month ago, to continue to attend the public meetings, but also the, the meetings for the park, rec, and tourism department, as I have done, and I have not seen anyone there at this, at that time. A lot of important decisions are being made at these meetings, and a lot of public feedback is, is being discerned that I think you need to pick up on. As far as this park, I have some genuine concerns, and these are my concerns, and I felt a lot of these same concerns were expressed Thursday night, and my, again, my ask is only that you continue to find your own opinion, so that you can, you can vote properly when the time comes. Now, at these public meetings, I'm seeing representation with Hebron, Sharp Town in Maradella, town council, I see council president from Hebron here, Colby, which is awesome. We need, we need, we don't have enough of their input. My second concern is from a strategic standpoint overall. Even the name of this park, West Metro, this is your map that you approved in less than a year, and it's not in the West Metro core. Why are we calling it what it's not? Why? It's in the tri-town, excuse me, excuse me. It's in the tri-town area, okay? I don't live in the tri-town area or the West Metro core, but I'm a Wacomico County citizen, and I'm in favor of building a park there. I am. I'm, I'm not in favor of the strategic process that is flawed. We had a chance to ask the engineer and the project manager questions. My background in a previous career was in strategic planning and in architecture, golf course architecture. I asked pointed questions about sizing, we could not see the map from the, from the, from the audience, it was too small. But the engineer engineered the project, I assume. He's the engineer, he's representing Sentry. So he's there, I asked a pointed question, a direct question about the size of part of this park, and he was unable to give the correct answer. I'm not sure if that means he's uninformed, or just steering me in the wrong direction. I found out the, the right answer myself after the meeting, and I got the chance to talk to the project manager, and I still can't give you the answer why I was given the wrong information in the public part of that meeting. This park looks like it's ready for tournaments. And real quick, I'll say, you have a wonderful tourism parks and rec department at Tourism. Our programming is lacking. My last point about this park is the engineer and the project manager have on their 11x11 soccer fields. We do not have programming in this county for 11-on-11 soccer. And I can tell you, because I'm a volunteer, I've been a volunteer in the parks and rec department, I've gone to the meetings, we don't do it. Why, why is it on the project? Why, in all the work groups, how has this not come up at this point? So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other public comments?
I'll get closer. He beat you up there.
Ben Jordan, again. I did just want to speak on the transfer stations a little bit. Anything Delmar can do as far as offering help, we do have a qualified CDL driver that we're working with, so with, I know Delmar, but even if we need to help piggyback and, you know, figure out the funding stuff later with Salisbury to help keep some of that stuff open, we're more than welcome to work out, you know, whatever issues or things we need to, you know, so I just wanted to put that out there for you guys, if you need me, you know, we're, we're there to help, and just call.
Thank you, Ms. Merritt, we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, guys, Dave Cook again. So, Mr. Taylor left, but I just wanted to read something to you briefly. Constitution of Maryland, Declaration of Rights, Article Eight, that the legislative, executive, and judicial powers of government ought to be forever separate and distinct from each other, and no person exercising the functions of one of said departments shall assume or discharge the duties of any other. I've taken the Maryland Constitution class, and this does, nowhere in here does it say this is specific to the state, at the state level. It just says government, you guys can read it for yourself, that's my one comment. My other comment is more of a question for Mr. County Attorney. I don't expect that you would answer it here and now, because I don't believe I'm allowed to ask a question. No, you, sir.
County Attorney.
Well, please excuse me.
If I can, since you just.
I missed, I missed called you.
Since you just addressed me.
Yes, sir.
As Mr. Taylor said, there is state Supreme Court.
That's fine.
Case.
May I finish, sir? I believe I have the floor, sir.
Well, if you don't want to learn.
Thank you. No, I just, I just want to ask a question, but thank you. John knows how to reach me to give me my answer. And my, pardon me?
Go ahead and proceed.
Thank you, sir. My question is, does the county have a specific process or form that you prefer or require to execute a petition for referendum? In other words, if I file a Freedom of Information Act request on the county, that's going to get delayed and sandbagged, because you, quite frankly, want a Maryland Public Information Act request. So I would hate to file the wrong documentation, waste time, waste the 60 days. If that is the case, I would like to know if those, where those forms are available. And thank you very much.
Mr. Cook, Mrs. Hurley could.
I'm sorry.
Help, Mrs. Mrs. Hurley could help you with that. If you really wanted to contact her tomorrow morning, she'd be delighted to help you with that.
Appreciate it. Thank you all.
Thank you.
If I can just finish what I was trying to say, as Mr. Taylor said, there's a Supreme Court of Maryland case law that says that specific position from the Bill of Rights does not apply to, other than to the state of Maryland, not in the municipalities or sub, subparts.
Any other public comments?
Sir.
Jim Atkins, Wacomico County. Just short and sweet, I don't know the two candidates that were turned down by the council, don't know anything about them, really doesn't matter. The thing that mattered to me, and I thanked the council tonight, follow the charter. Their charter was put in there for a reason, that's how the rules are, and that's what's supposed to happen, and now they're supposed to be followed. So whether or not I disagree with you or agree with you, thank you for following the rules in the charter.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? Seeing none, that concludes public comments. Council comments?
I've got some.
Joe?
First of all, I want to thank everybody for coming tonight, even the ones that criticized us. You know, there was a vote taken not to hire these two individuals, and it was a vote of six to one. It wasn't four to three, it wasn't five to two. Everybody was present, and it was discussed, and it's been, as we would say, chewed on for a long time. And tonight, we reaffirm that. And we reaffirmed it for a reason, is because we didn't find the individuals qualified for what we needed them to do. So I see, we had some folks in here from some of the municipalities came in tonight, and I want to thank you guys for coming, and John, you didn't recognize or delegate, Mr. Anderton, you forgot to recognize him. He snuck out before you seen him.
I didn't see him.
That's fine, that's fine.
That's.
Thank him for coming, too.
I didn't even notice here.
But I'll say this, and this isn't a very nice thing to say, but everybody said, why can't you all get along? Okay? I've heard that a lot. What we seen tonight, while we were trying to run our meeting, why we couldn't get, we, we have problems getting along, not to say that we can't get along, while we have problems. You know, our meetings were interrupted by the other branch of government numerous times, our council president, other council members, when they were trying to speak. And I think Mrs. Shields, Shanice Shields, made the comment, it was lack of disrespect. I've not been to the Delmar town meeting since Ben got elected. I was there a few times before, and I've seen the way they ran their meetings, it was very professional. I've been to Willardstown meeting numerous times, very professional. I've been to Pittsville town meeting very, many times, very professional. And I'll say tonight, it was very embarrassing, the way this, this meeting went, and the way some people that's sitting in this room acted. Mr. White, thanks for coming. We were, John, myself, and Jeff were there the other night. It was a great presentation, but you could see of it. Like you say, it was kind of small, and I mentioned to Laura today, possibly we could have a work session to bring those same folks in and present that to us for the rest of. same folks in and present that to us for the rest of the council. It's a great idea that Park spent a long time coming, I think. But I know there's concerns. So anyway, so thanks, everybody, for coming. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Any other comments? Jeff?
So, good evening, everybody. This past Sunday, I joined over 100 members of our community at the Cathedral of Love Church for a prayer vigil. This followed the one on July 16th at the Wesley Temple Church on West Road. It was in response to the unnecessary level of crime that we're seeing in our area. This is organized by the Watchmen, which is a group of local pastors that have taken the mission upon themselves to get out into the community and simply try to improve the community by showing support that there is help out there for the people that live in these communities. One of the takeaways I got from both of these vigils was the frustration of the law enforcement in their investigation processes, how they go through when they investigate these crimes. They need help from the public. They need people... Bottom line is, if you see something, say something. There's ways to report things and remain anonymous. We had another homicide last night at 11 o'clock that was followed two and a half hours later by a drive-by shooting. So, a press release will come out tomorrow on that. This stuff is still happening, and it makes me sad. It really does. On a lighter note, I'd like to thank all of our county employees, all of them, all departments, for the hard work they do every day. It takes a lot of people to make this county move and function. Sadly, there's openings in every department. We don't have enough people. We're dealing with workforce shortages, increased prices of literally everything we touch. I don't need to tell anybody that. When you go to the grocery store, you buy gas. When the executive handed us the budget several months ago, it had a 3% pay raise in it for the county employees, and the council wanted to see what we could do to improve on that because we felt that 3% wasn't enough. And through our budget sessions and lots of discussion, not my first budget, but this one had a few more zeros on it than the ones I'm used to. I'm proud to say that the council was able to include a 6% pay raise to the county employees for the fiscal year '24 budget. And when we handed it back to the executive, it was approved, and I believe it will be in the next paycheck. Is that correct, Mrs. Hurley?
Yes.
Okay. And lastly, oh, I'm still on three minutes. I've got plenty of time. So, thanks, John. There continues to be an extraordinary amount of misinformation on social media. It's just mind-boggling at this point regarding the different situations that the county's, council's dealing with, the executive is dealing with, all this back and forth at any given moment, a multitude of issues. I just want to offer a simple piece of advice. If you have a question, what's going on? Pick up the phone or send an email to a council member. I will speak for everybody up here. We're available to talk to anybody about anything. I don't care what district you live in. I have never asked that question when somebody's contacted me with a question about anything. I don't care what district you live in. You live in Wycomico County, that's all I care about. Just call us or email us, and we'll help out whatever we need to do, we'll help out. That's all I got. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Merritt.
I just want to say also, I'm glad to see and meet the mayor of Delmar. I used to live in Delmar. And I love Delmar. I really did. And the young man here, glad to see you again. I owe you all another visit. And it was another from Pittsville, wasn't it? He laughed. Okay. I'm limited on my mobile because I've got a bad knee, but I certainly can go to Delmar. I can't go to the Civic Center. I can go to Delmar, and I come to Hebron. I can know where to get to Hebron. And Pittsville, because they still have Pittsville Diner, or is it called something else? They still got Willards. Was the guy from Willards?
Don't leave Willards out.
Yeah.
Don't leave Willards out.
Because we've gone to the pizza place, Willards, yeah. So I intend to visit. Like we said, we've just been in here eight months, and all of this is a learning process. And some things that people request may not happen overnight because of whatever it is. Now, I try not to make promises because I'm project-oriented. I believe in projects. I believe in playgrounds for kids, having structured programs in the playgrounds. Because we've got ghost playgrounds around town, and we need a playground, especially in Shane's district. And so I'm just happy to see people, whether I agree with you all or not. I love taking the criticism. When people criticize me, it makes me a better person. And Joe knows that, because that's my buddy back there, Joe Abaro. He used to work on me, I tell you. But I treat him nice because that's his opinion, and I think that's what we need to do. We're going to have to have opinions. We're going to get along, and then sometime we're going to disagree. But always have a smile on your face because one day, you may need that very person that you attacked. Because you never know when you might need somebody. So I'm just happy again to see you, and I'll be down Hebron. I haven't forgotten you.
Thanks, Shane. Any other comments?
Yeah, I've got something.
Shane?
So I just want to reaffirm to the public, we're going to fix this, what you heard about telling the two positions. We're going to fix it. We're going to move forward. We're going to work through it. It's just going to take some time. We just have a difference of opinion on the charter, and we've got to get it figured out. But we will figure it out. And thank everybody for coming tonight.
Yes.
And I'll second Councilman Merritt. If you want, I don't care where you live, if you want the full story, if you want to talk, if you want to think through, if you want to come up with ideas, if you want to have me come visit, I don't care where you live. I'm from Mardella, but I live in Salisbury. 410-251-5268 comes right here. It's about as public as you can get. Seriously, reach out. I mean, all of us, I mean, I go all over the place, from Hebron to every week. I'm in a different space from somebody who reaches out because they care in their county. Well, I don't just serve the citizens of District 4. I serve the whole county, so I'm happy to come there. So if you ever want to talk through your ideas, anybody, if you want to get a better understanding, 410-251-5268, call me anytime, text me, doesn't matter, message, whatever. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Joe?
I want to bring something up, Jeff. Mr. Merritt brought up, talking about social media. Social media is a great thing, Facebook, Instagram, whatever. Some people do. If you're campaigning, if you're trying to sell used furniture, if you're whatever trying to do. But...
Where would you get music from?
Yeah.
Who sells that?
You shouldn't try to govern on it, and that's what's happening. People are trying to govern, run their government off of it. And unfortunately, a lot of misinformation gets spread like that. So I do want to recognize a couple in the audience. Tracy Richardson and Lee. Tracy just retired from the state highway. Not yet?
So long.
How long?
Thirty-four years.
Yeah, I mean, how much longer?
Oh, we'll see.
I thought she sent out an email you were retiring.
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry about that. Anyway.
This is on PAC 14.
Yeah, I knew that.
You might not have a job tomorrow.
Thanks, Joe.
Her boss might not know this, right? Anyway, they farm on the east side, and if you need any sweet corn, Lee grows the best. I've been in there three times in the past two weeks. So anyway, thank you.
Comments?
Tracy Richardson.
I would like to say, we may all have clearly a difference of opinions, but I really do like everyone up here. I mean, me and Josh are going to go out to coffee here next week or so. And I mean, I really do like all the people here. I mean, I can talk to them, and especially Shaney. I mean, we clearly disagree, but I have no problem walking her down to the car and opening the door for her because that's just the right thing to do. And ultimately, we're all here just trying to do the right thing. We just may have a difference of opinion sometimes, but in the end, I think everything's going to work its way out. Regardless of I like it or not, it's going to happen. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
And you were nice enough to fix my tile.
Yeah. Yeah. Even we disagree, I went over to his house and fixed his tile.
Not saying we weren't fighting in the middle of the bathroom, but...
Thank you. Under presidential comments, I'll simply say, it sort of alluded to that the county, the council needs to get it together, and we need to move forward, and we need to get beyond this, and we have to do what's right for the county and all that. I don't want people to lose sight of what we've done here. I say within, just within the last six weeks, we gave $800,000 above maintenance of effort to the school board, the Board of Education, $800,000 above maintenance of effort. It's never been done. Someone made the comment, oh, you've cut 500. We only cut 500 out of what was increased. The recommendation was 1.3 million. We didn't want to go that high. You have to continue to pay that year after year. It's a recurring expense. We paid $800,000 above maintenance of effort. We also increased the library budget by 10%. We increased the salaries of the Sheriff's Department for their deputies from a base salary of $46,000 to $55,000. We also gave over $1 million in addition to our volunteer fire companies, which we think is very important, and millions and millions in capital funding for our airport. I just want to let you know that. And we did all that, and at the same time, we lowered your property taxes. So I say, for the most part, I think Wycomico County is doing a very good job. And as Jeff said, we also gave an increase of 6% to the citizens, to our employees in Wycomico County. So I really think that this council has done an excellent job over the time period. That being said, I would like to entertain a motion to adjourn so that we can go into open work session.
Salute. Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Meeting's adjourned. First item on the open work session is proposed regulation. Mr. Williams, how are you?
Yes, sir.
How are you tonight?
I'm doing fine, sir.
Thanks for bearing with us.
No problem. It was interesting. Say that.
It was for us, too.
I will certainly let you have the floor if you'd like to start.
Yes, sir. Hello to all the council. My name's Tony Williams. I'm the Wycomico County Code Enforcement Officer for all the area not covered by the two cities and all the town districts, the 300 and some square miles that's left. That's my responsibility. So I'm here tonight to give praise to Mrs. Hurley and Attorney Mitchell for crafting an amendment for the repeat nuisance offenders, an administrative, and I guess you could call it a penalty fee in reference to that. This is something that I've thought about for a couple of years now, since it was initiated by another county. I thought it would be very helpful to this county that we have that. And with the help of Councilman Shields, I was able to get an audience with Mrs. Hurley. Mrs. Hurley asked whatever questions she needed to ask. I filled in the blanks. She turned it over to Attorney Mitchell, and he put together that amendment that you see before you now.
Are there any questions that anyone might have here? Yes, Josh?
Just a question, I guess, as far as the amounts that we come up with for a fine. Any particular reason why those amounts were...
Well, what we tried to do was to come up with a figure that was fairly close to a lot of the information that was already in the nuisance code. And that amount that Attorney Mitchell came up with was the $100 amount. We felt that was adequate enough to get our point across as far as the repeat nuisance offenders and their particular behavior that was causing problems, but not so much that it would cause a serious problem, like a penalty fee that was not that harsh of a penalty fee. I guess you could say that.
Any other questions?
Mr.?
Yes.
I just do want to say, by the way, so while we're at it, if I were to, I could never rank county employees, obviously, but if I had a very tippy-top tier of some of the best and hardest-working employees, anytime I've ever had a constituent issue, A.K. Kenny and Mr. Williams are immediately on top of it and handled it so very professionally and so well. I feel like there, it's actually not two individuals, but a team of individuals, it feels like, because you all do such a great job. So any more tools that we can give you in the toolbox to be able to be more effective at that, I'm happy to do so. But I just want to publicly let you know that I've been just astounded at all that you have been able to do over the last five years that I've been on the council, and I just really appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilman Hastings. I appreciate that. Thank you. Any other questions?
Shaney, is this exactly what you were wanting when we talked about? Remember, we went on the west, or your side of town.
Yes, and I think that the repeat offenders, you just can't believe what you see. And I almost felt like I was assistant code enforcement with abandoned cars and now we have trailers, what are they called, campers, people living in campers illegally. And this person, Tony, being the one person for a whole county, 325 square miles, and I was kind of upset. Well, I was upset, not kind of. I was really upset when they cut his budget for the part-time code enforcement officer because he's one man, and he can't cover the whole county, just like you heard the young man talking about things that were going wrong and address. But see, some things may be state highway problems. It might not be county problems. So we have to decipher which problem is what. But I do agree with Josh. Anytime I called Tony or gave him my address or something, he addressed it. But he needed help in repeat offenders, people with tires in the yard, they're still there, because I went by there the other day. They gave him warnings. I even visited this particular person and say, you need to move the tires, and they haven't moved them yet. So I think this will help him to address that issue, and I appreciate this legislation. And Laura, too. Laura, that's, yeah, and Andy.
Mr. Williams, thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
You're not invited in a lot of times, are you?
No, sir. Most times, not invited.
Speaking of tires, this Friday and Saturday coming, there's a free tire disposal day at the Wycomico County landfill. I think it's minimum 10 tires with no commercial tires. So maybe that'll help a little bit with your problem there.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
At no charge, by the way. So...
I also want to thank you for what you do. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilman. Appreciate it. So the council's in favor moving forward?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Mrs. Hurley, if you'll help us with the...
Yeah, so it would come back for introduction, and we could do that the next council meeting on August 15.
Mr. Williams, you're invited, but you do not necessarily have to attend.
Yes.
Okay, council. Unless you want to bring the popcorn.
I can do that. Sure, I can do that.
Do you have any other questions for us?
No, sir.
All right. Look, thank you very much for taking your time.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Thanks, man.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the discussion of convenience and recycling centers. Mr. Lufman, good evening. How are you?
Hi, doing great. I have dinner for Abaro. He's the subject matter expert for the county on this, and I just want to say, if there's any initiatives coming from our office from now on, we'll have Mr. Williams on the panel to present.
Good evening. How are you all today?
Good.
Great.
Oh, great.
So, yes, we did shut down two of our 24-hour unmanned recycling stations. We have gotten feedback from the public. I'm sure you all probably have heard a few things as well. We have an issue with trash in the county. I'm sure you all have heard from people. It's all over the roadways. It's ending up at these recycling stations. Those are our problem children. That's where we find things like, we literally had a dead goat left at the Fosky Recycling Station, which is not far from the elementary school in Delmar. We have dirty diapers, appliances, tires... have dirty diapers, appliances, tires. We have, in the last three days, pulled 10 bags that weighed 40 to 50 pounds out of Jersey Road. That was full of old maggot-filled trash. We don't have a whole lot of spare people to spend every waking hour cleaning up these stations. We used to have three road crews from the detention center that used to go around, and they would clean up those stations and they'd clean up the roadways. Unfortunately, they shut those down during the pandemic. They are not bringing them back. So now it is our responsibility to try and keep these locations clean and not a hazard for anybody who's there recycling. The stations that we closed are actually, the Civic Center is 6.5 miles from Allen. It's six miles from the airport. These are all convenience centers where you can recycle. It's 7.1 miles from Parsonsburg and 4.2 from the landfill. The extension office was 1.3 miles from the actual landfill. While it was convenient for people that were going up Nanicoke Road to just unload their recycling there, that area became a nightmare, too. And these are areas that sometimes cameras were available and they worked great. Other times, we have people that are recycling things that they're not supposed to in the middle of the night. It's usually between 1:00 and 3:00 a.m. And once their brake lights, their taillights are aimed at the cameras, you can't tell what the tags are. So unfortunately, we have struggled to try and hold people accountable for, for a lot of this trash that's ending up everywhere. We do more than any of our surrounding counties as far as recycling centers and convenience centers. We still have 15. There are as far as Wongo, Byvalve, and Sharp Town, and Fruitland, and scattered in between. The people that were using the Civic Center were typically City of Salisbury folks and county people as well. And they typically have blue bins that are curbside. I've heard from people that were upset because they prefer to use our bins as opposed to the, the blue bins that the city provides. But with the 11 stations that we have with three roll-off drivers, they're trying to keep up with all that. So you're talking four bins that are just recycling and then trash bins on top of it. On top of that, our employees are also handling, let me find the right piece of paper here, sorry. They also pull trash from the Health Department, here, the G O B, the Sheriff Department, Henry Parker, County Roads, Parks and Rec, Tri-County Council. So these are actually, and I have these for everybody if you'd like them, these are the, these are, in a typical week, this is what their three roll-off drivers are supposed to handle. And on top of that, they're also required to try and clean up whatever mess is there. It's an impossible task for three employees to do with the, just the distance alone between that and expense for fuel, the wear and tear on the trucks. The bins are not cheap. They have to get repainted. They have to get welded, stickers on them, you know. It is a big expense, and it is a good thing that we're, what we're doing with the county, we're doing 30%, which is a, the state actually only requires us to do 20. So we are keeping up with that. We're doing great. Recycling is not dead. We just had 10 loads of tractor trailers of cardboard that were shipped out in the last month or two, and paper as well. We have, we're stockpiling the plastic because of the market. We're hoping it'll come up. It's continuing to drop, unfortunately. And so, of course, being market-driven, we can only find, you know, we can only recycle items that we can find an end market for. So that, that's, that basis our decision as to what material we can actually handle. Inmates do all our, pull all the contaminants out. We went from 12 to 14 to anywhere from three to five max. That has played a major role in what we can and cannot do. People are complaining right now because of plastic ending up on the landfill. We're actually using that for the fluff layer in the new cell, and that's an M D requirement. However, the plastic that has been sitting in our plastic room is so contaminated at this point between birds that are in there and just garbage, you, it would be difficult to pull anything out without a hazmat suit on. It's that bad. So.
Why do we accept plastic? If, I mean, from what I understand, only about 4% to 6%?
5% of plastic that's manufactured actually gets recycled.
So why do we even accept it? Wouldn't we save a whole lot of time spending trucks back and forth if we just stopped as a county accepting plastic? Because plastic is indeed trash. I think we all want to see it as something else.
It's a problem child, yes.
We want to see it as recycling. The truth is, it is, it is trash, is it not?
What we get in the bins, probably I'd say 40 to maybe 50% is actually a product that we can find markets for. H D P E natural, we get the most money for that. P E T and H D P colored, we don't get as much money. The P E T are your water bottles. H D P, like your, your laundry detergent bottle. The best bet for people to do if they actually want to make an impact with recycling is to stop buying plastic. You know that as well as most people. And I'm not going to say anything about any.
I don't, I don't, by the way, I appreciate it. I don't think the broader public understands that. And I think that's the bigger piece. I took a picture, I started to send it to you the other day, but I took a picture of my, my neighbor who, I'm in the city, in the city Salisbury, and we, you know, he had three bins full to the rim of plastic.
Plastic, yeah.
And that's all he has to recycle. But the truth is, it's, it is just trash. So we are, I mean, it's wasting time. If he, if he would be saving county employee time, he'd be saving the county money if we just put that right in the trash.
Well, people, the plastic industry has spent billions on convincing people that as long as it has the chasing triangle symbol, that it is a recyclable product and we can find a market for it, and that's not the reality. The only products that we can find a viable market for are ones and twos, and those are narrow-neck containers. So if we could just get people to put the proper item and stop wishcycling, that would help. But the problem is, is a lot of it, this stuff comes in very bagged. They are, the inmates don't have the time to spend when you literally have a building that's 50 by 50 feet and it is loaded with plastic. You cannot open every bag. So for those kind of items, they're getting thrown away. I mean, we've had an entire toilet put in our glass recycling. We've had mattresses. We had 11 mattresses that were dumped at the Civic Center, along with a ton of other trash. I even have pictures of the gentleman who deposited them there. This is the reality. This is our plastic room, and there is a lot of stuff in here that is not even close to being plastic. There is a styrofoam ban in the state of Maryland for any fast food or restaurant that's, you know, handing out food. We're still getting styrofoam in there that people are, you know, it's plastic, it's got to be recycled. Same thing with vinyl siding. And things have gotten so bad at some of these 24-hour recycling stations that people are actually opening up the backs of the bins and putting trash inside.
I understand that we have a lot of violations, and you do great, great work, by the way, and the work that you gave was fantastic, and it was very eye-opening. And there are always going to be, you know, those anecdotes as far as, you know, what, how terrible the conditions are, et cetera, et cetera. But, you know, I think, from what you're saying, to a certain degree, I mean, you could close every single station, every, every single station throughout the county.
Right. That's, that's.
And every county in the state of Maryland could close every single recycling station.
Right.
I think, you know, not so much you, but I think that, you know, administration needs to possibly look at maybe what the solution might be, because it is a problem. We don't have enough inmates.
Right, right.
Maybe we need to hire people, because we don't have enough inmates.
Right. Well, the contamination is minimal, though, when we have a manned station. So all of these convenience centers, where if you have a household permit, you can throw your trash away, you can also recycle there. And that seems to, there's a disconnect between the public understanding that they can use those convenience centers without a permit. So once they realize that and realize that they have 11 places that they can recycle, they, they seem to get a better grip on it. But it's the unmanned stations, and this is not just our county, it's Worcester County, Somerset County, Dorchester County don't have unmanned stations for that very reason. And as long as there's a person there, people are going to be more honest with an attendant than they are if it's just, you know, I'm there by myself, it's the middle of the night.
You make a very, you make a very good point. And the point I'm trying to make, I guess, to you, Bunky, more specifically, is, is there a solution to this? Do we man the stations? I say that, we just had a $20 million increase in our budget this year, 20 million. And I would think that we could find some funding to help the recycling effort in Wycomico County, certainly not to close down. I have, my suspicion probably is that the two, the two stations that you closed down were the most widely used. And now they're, they're shut down. And you're going to, you're going to start filling up your landfill faster than you thought you might be just two weeks ago. And that's going to create a real problem. We already know we have a serious problem at the landfill. So I, I would not, I would not want to see us give up. I'm wondering whether there's any way that we can readjust and try to figure out where we could find some funding and to reimagine what we need to do.
You said find the funding. But we approved the budget for this, and then they cut the two stations out.
Well, what I'm, I know they cut the two stations. I understand that, and that could be, there could be now extra funding available. But what I am saying is, if you, as it, as it was before, when we had the two stations, you didn't have enough funding, you didn't have enough people, you're relying on inmates. I'm not quite sure why the inmate, number of inmates has, has been reduced.
Prop, yeah.
You've only had three drivers. I don't know if you're not paying your drivers enough. But I would like to see maybe a comprehensive reevaluation of what we're doing in recycling and try to figure out some way to salvage it so that we can continue with this service. I think it's invaluable. There are a lot of different departments where, you know, this, the county taxpayers subsidize it as part of it. You know, we spend more than we should with, with the airport, but it's what the citizens in Wycomico County want. So that's what taxpayers' monies are for.
Right.
So I, really, I was shocked when it closed. I would, I would like to see if at all possible that we figure out some way to help recover it and to make your job a whole lot easier than recycling. Because I've seen the five individuals back there trying to sort through tons of trash. It was a losing scenario from day one.
Yeah, trust me, I get to clean up the, the different unmanned stations regularly. So I know firsthand how bad they get.
And I heard you mention about the other recycling centers that are manned. It's hard for people that work during the day to get home and get to those places before they close.
Well, the one at the main landfill that is probably used more than any other one, especially because there's a brush pile there, is open from 6:00 a.m. till 6:00 p.m. seven days a week. It used to be open until 8:00. During the pandemic, the hours were cut. But it is open seven days a week from 6:00 a.m. till 6:00 p.m. And that usually is enough time for the average person to get there and unload trash or recycling or whatever. Plus, they can do so much more recycling than just the usual household stuff. We take oil antifreeze, propane tanks, batteries, brush, oyster shells, you know, there's a whole lot to recycling that's not the, just the four main things that most people think of in their house.
You take batteries?
Yes, we do.
Okay, that's good to know. That's good to know.
Now, we do have Household Hazardous Waste Day coming up in October that'll handle any of the, the lithium type of batteries or any of the chemicals that people have laying around their house. And we do have a scrap tire event day that's coming up, actually Friday and Saturday. Households can bring up to 10 tires for free. The state just, you know, changed all that, so.
One thing I was going to say is, I appreciate what you do. First time I met you, you were very passionate in recycling, and I think you're a value to the county. Thank you.
Thank you.
Secondly, this is just a recommendation. I think, I think most of the council would probably agree with this is, and I'm not trying to attack anyone. I'm just saying, maybe next time we should have this before we shut down. Just, just because we had a lot of people calling us and, and it was just a lot of confusion. This is very informative. If this was a month ago, I don't think we would have had the, the calls that we, we would have had. But my second, my third thing that I wanted to say was, with the cuts, maybe, maybe, I don't know if there's specific transfer stations where we can maybe increase the hours to make it more convenient. As Shane Baker pointed out, it is quite difficult sometimes, because the one by the airport, you know, closes at 5:00 o'clock or whatever, and it's a certain time, a certain day, and I might not be able to make it that day. If it was one more hour or two more hours open, then bam, I could probably make it. So that might be an avenue.
Just out of curiosity, you say we have three roll-off drivers?
We only have three, yes. And, and the trucks, you know, if there's an issue with the trucks, and the trucks are not new vehicles, they break down. Matter of fact, today, we only had two that were roadworthy. So, you know, that sort of thing is, plays into the whole trying to keep up with the, you know, large volume of bins that have to be pulled.
So do we have any open positions?
I think we have 10 at least at the landfill.
Do you know if they're advertised?
I, I'm going to assume so. I don't know.
Yeah, that, that'd probably be good if we got some more drivers and get more people in, in the mix. And to everybody else's point, thank you, the tour that you took us on. That was very informative. I learned a lot that day. So thank you.
You're very welcome.
I don't, I don't think she's here tonight, but I had Alicia Zan reach out to me, a constituent, who was very upset about the closings. And others have reached out as well. And I, I just, I hate to see them go, because it seemed like it really impacted the citizens of the county. A lot of people were really upset about it. So if there's anything we can do to help bring them back, Bunky let us know. I'd be interested. But it affected a lot of people.
Even if we're dealing with an enterprise account, Bunky, we have subsidized enterprise accounts before. We put a ton of money in the airport at some time.
Sure.
Jeff?
Yeah, and I just like, of course, I add on to that, the, we had, I mean, easily two dozen people immediately reach out and were questioned, why did the Civic Center location specifically close? I think as Mr. Holloway would always bring up, if we, you know, the more that you limit places for folks to be able to take trash or recycling, you know, the, there's a, there's a correlation between that and the amount of trash that's found on the side of the roads. So obviously, if we close a station, transfer station, or remove that off, that, that doesn't mean that that's immediately going elsewhere into the trash. It's, you know, a lot of that ends up on the roads or in the other areas. So if, the more that we can continue to focus on helping people do the right thing, and especially, I, I mean, I don't, is there a current location in the city of Salisbury?
No, and the reason why we don't have one, unless Jersey Road is considered in the city, is because the city does curbside recycling. So it would be kind of redundant to.
But the, I mean, that, obviously, but, I mean, I can look out my window in the middle of City of Salisbury and see a county property in my house. You know, the, the county properties all over the place.
Yes, it is very.
I think they do, we do need a location, I mean, the city of Salisbury, it is obviously the largest population in the county.
Right. And a lot of, a lot of the constituents do use our recycling because they prefer it over single stream, which is putting everything in the bin. And then when that glass bottle breaks, it contaminates the paper and the cardboard. So, yeah, I, I understand why they, they like using our stations. And like I said, all these convenience centers located throughout the county do great, great work, and they stay clean and they're not, you know, we don't have issues with those like we do with the unmanned stations. Now, we still do have Delmar, Fruitland, Jersey, Jersey Road, Pittsville, and Willards that are unmanned stations. Like I said, Jersey Road, we just cleaned a bunch of trash that's constantly being dumped there. Unfortunately, we don't have electric or the ability to put cameras up. Otherwise, we might be able to curtail some of it, but.
Any particular effort that we could do to, I, I think that location is important, that, I mean, a lot of.
The Civic Center.
Civic Center location specifically. I mean, if we need to put up extra cameras or whatever, security, I mean, certainly, I'd support that. But I, what we don't want to see, obviously, is that more of the trash ends up just being put on the side of, people go, put it on the side of the road.
Right. And, and I get what you're saying, but there actually is, there's a town, either Vermont or New Hampshire, they do not charge for anything trash-wise, nothing. You can throw tires, doesn't matter what it is, your entire house if you want. You, you are not charged a penny. They have roadside trash. So I don't know if it's the, I think some of it is the money issue, but I think it's, it's also laziness and people's attitude of it's somebody else's problem. And we see that in our recycling bins, because people, you know, purposely throw garbage in there thinking, well, you know, someone else will make it better.
Mr. President?
Yes?
Last comment, I'll just. Mr. President, last comment, I'll just say, obviously, Mr. Lufman, I too, I would love to see the county come up with better options for addressing waste. You know, 40% of what goes into landfill is, you know, is biodegradable. We, we probably have, what, 18, realistically, 18 years left on our, on our, on our, I mean, maybe less, who knows? I don't even want to speculate, but obviously, the, the citizens and the taxpayers of county, of this county are going to be in a rude awakening when there's no other place to go to take your trash. And when that landfill fills up, you know, there's no other space in the county.
Well, and one of the reasons why it's filling up quickly, if you talk to any of the roll-off drivers, we are literally, our landfill is right off of Route 50. Other surrounding counties, including Delaware, you have to drive a half an hour or better to get to those landfills. So when you're centrally located in the middle of, you know, the Eastern Shore and you're right off a highway, you're gonna get a lot of the garbage. And we're also one of the, you know, less expensive landfills too, as far as tipping fees go. So of course, you know, you're getting that as well.
So I, I guess I'll add to that to the administration. I think the more that we can think through ideas, and I think anaerobic digestion, you've heard me talk about that before, Mr. Lufman, I, I think that something, those, along those kind of lines could help, you know, divert, we just basically need to push that timeframe out as long as possible. So I'm there to support in any kind of way, and I do appreciate all that you do, the great job that you do with recycling in the county, so thank you.
Thank you.
James, you, you even suggested the idea of incineration. I think Frederick County had tried it, but they became in, in, it became political turmoil, imagine that. So, but I think, you know, this is, this is an informative work session, but I hope at the same time, it can be constructive where we do seriously maybe rethink where we are now and look at what might be necessary to salvage what we have and, and save our landfill and recycle at the same time.
And this is something, the landfill specifically, not recycling specifically, is one of the reasons we brought Wayne Strasburg back on our contract, that he's looking, he's looking at this issue and, and preparing. And we, we, I don't want to give a timeframe, but in the future, we expect to have Mr. Strasburg present to the council on that.
Is the Department of the Environment also working at the landfill?
Well, close, Maryland Environmental Service.
Environmental Service, I'm sorry.
MDE.
Yeah, and MDE's there where they just approved Cell 10, which is, we're doing the fluff layer on now. But Maryland Environmental Service is doing a study on the landfill now to get to, to Councilman Hastings' question of how much time do we have left with the current configuration? We just, 10 was approved. The contract for the cells that was approved, you know, before my time, a year or two ago, was for 10 and eight. So they've now started designing eight. We expect that to be done in 120 days. So, then we'll have two more open cells, which would be good.
I guess the disappointing thing about closing these recycling stations is, we've heard all these years about how we're supposed to be going green, you know? And you turn around and first thing you know, the recycling is closed down. Do you have any idea how many, you measure it in tons, of tons of material come out of those?
Bins?
Bins a year?
Yeah, well, I...
At, at the Civic Center?
Yeah, we do, we do have the specific numbers. I don't have them with me.
That's fine, you don't have...
Yeah, yeah.
I've heard it's about 400 or 500 tons a year. That sounds like a lot.
Well, and, you know, that's, that's before it's been sorted.
Sorted, yeah.
So, you know, when you...
I mean, move...
Yeah, yeah, once you sort it, you're...
So, I can understand a little bit of the, one on Nanticoke Road being it's only a mile. But, and the other thing that, when we say that it's in the city or near the city, you know, we've heard this a lot of times, city residences are also county residences, you know, so. But I think we need to find a solution to try to get those reopened. You know, if it's driver shortage, you know, we need, I mean, we, like John said, we increased the budget $20 million and we're closing things up. You know, that doesn't seem, that doesn't make sense, you know? Sounds like maybe there's, need to get to work on it. Anyway, if you can, appreciate it.
Anything you'd like to add?
No, other than, you know, we do have 11 stations that are convenience centers and another five recycling stations compared to, the next county has eight, and that's Worcester County. Somerset has even less. So we, we go above and beyond. I know some people feel it's an inconvenience to drive a mile or two to get to maybe the landfill, but, you know, under the circumstances and with the, the minimal number of drivers we have, it's, it's been a struggle for us to try and keep up.
Thanks again for being here, and thanks for the work you're doing, and thanks for taking the time to stay here this late.
No problem.
We appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, can we take a two-minute recess so we can switch out the cords? Because we do have someone attending remotely for the next work session.
All right, we'll take a two-minute recess. And our reconvenance is Wycomica County Council Legislative Session 2023-15 for August 1st, 2023. The first item on the agenda for the open work session is a, is a letter of support for the Fire Station Act. That's HR 1814 and Senate Bill 977. These are federal bills that we're talking about to create a $750 million grant program within the Federal Emergency Management Agency, which is FEMA, that hopefully will help provide funding to modify, upgrade, and construct fire and EMS facilities. We're lucky to have with us tonight, this is Alyssa Hastings, Eastern Shore Regional Director for the U.S. Senator Chris Van Hollen. Alyssa, glad to have you here.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Council President and members of the council. Thanks for having me. So tonight, we're gonna be just bringing forward information about a bill that Senator Van Hollen is sponsoring called the Fire Station Act. But I also just wanted to take a moment to introduce myself. This is my first time coming to the council since I've been in my new position as Eastern Shore Regional Director. And I pass along my business cards to Laura and to all of you, just anything that you need as far as federal support. Our office is based in Cambridge. I cover the entire Eastern Shore for the senator, and I'm just, I just want to be, you know, as much of a resource as possible to all of you as your residents are having, you know, everything from last-minute passport troubles to anything, any grant letters of support for federal, federal grant opportunities. We just want to make sure that you have that information and that I can, we, we can turn things around really quick and be a fantastic team, so.
Just happened to be his wife.
Yes, and, full disclosure, Josh and I are married. But I also have, with, speaking of our fantastic team, I do have my colleague Francesca, who's zooming in today, who is our legislative correspondent, who really is, this, this act is, she calls it one of her babies, she, she really knows it in and out, and so she's gonna talk about it and explain why it came about, what's in it, and what you can do to support, and also just make sure that you fully understand what's in, in the legislation.
Can we bring Francesca full screen here at all? Do you know? Here comes Tom, he'll fix it.
Hi, can you hear me? Should I hold off?
There we go, yeah.
Maybe if you leave your audio on, that might work. That way we'll be able to see you full screen.
All right, we got you. Yeah.
Okay, you can see me?
Yes.
And here?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, everyone, I wish I could be there in person. Thank you, Council President Cannon, for, for having me, and council members. It's been an honor to listen in. The work that you do is so important, and I really just appreciate the time. So I'd love to talk to you about the Fire Station Act. This is a really important bill that Senator Van Hollen is leading on the Senate side, and Representative Pascrell of New Jersey is leading on the House side. So the bill, you have a one-pager there with you and happy to answer questions in, in a second, but just as an overview, this really came about, this is a reintroduction, so the senator introduced it last Congress. This came about just essentially from, from a need for fire station reconstruction and renovation, as you know. We have about 370 fire stations across Maryland. We did a survey in 2022, and about 71 departments needed some form of renovation. And across the country, that statistic is sort of similar. We, there's a 2019 survey conducted that showed that 44% of fire stations across the country are over 40%, over 40 years old and need some sort of repair and lack sufficient ventilation and, and sort of other things that are really essential for firefighters to do the work that they do. So the bill would provide a $750 million grant program administered, administered through FEMA, which would sit alongside existing grants, notably AFG and SAFER. So right now, neither one of those grants, it can be used for fire station renovation or reconstruction. So as much need as there is for AFG and SAFER funds across the country, there is an equal amount of need for fire station renovation and reconstruction. So we're really lucky on the Senate side to have both, obviously Senator Van Hollen, who's leading the bill, and Senator Cardin. But also, we worked really closely with Senator Murkowski of Alaska. She's been a champion on, on, for firefighters, and this is a huge issue in her state as well. So this is a bipartisan bill on both the Senate side and the House side. So we're really lucky to have great partners and, and cosponsors. But we do need some more support, so we'd love to have, you know, if, you know, I don't want to tell you how to, how to advocate, but, you know, a support letter to the Maryland delegation. Not all Maryland representatives have, have cosponsored the bill, so that would be really helpful. And just, you know, whatever contacts you have across the, the state and, and also the country, the more mobilization for this bill, the better. So that's an overview of where we are currently. The bill has been introduced, and it's been referred to the Senate Committee on Homeland Security and Governmental Affairs. We have the support of the Chairman of that committee, Senator Peters. So he's, he's very, you know, a champion for, for this issue. But it needs to get essentially through that committee and to be considered before the full Senate. And as much as it's, it's sort of easy to introduce a bill, it's very hard to get one passed, as you know. So the more sort of energy and information that we can get out about this, the better. So I know there was interest from the council on this legislation, so wanted to give an overview, an update, and just leave it to you for any questions you have about the bill and next steps.
I guess a question I might have is, you said it was introduced in the last session, and, and I guess, not sure maybe what happened in the last session, or why there might be reasons and why there might be pushback on this particular piece of legislation?
Yes, so just to be, to be honest with you, so last Congress, we, the senator introduced the bill, and the authorization amount was for $1 billion for the grant, because oftentimes you authorize at a higher level, and then when it's actually, you know, appropriated and then obligated, it's much lower. So AFG and SAFER, for example, are authorized for $750 million, but the obligate, you know, obligated for lower, probably around 3, you know, 300 million, if, you know, a little higher, but I can get you those numbers exactly. So, to answer your question, the Senate kind of operates on fives sometimes, so it's really hard to predict why a certain thing didn't go through. It wasn't bipartisan last Congress. A lot of people don't understand necessarily why you would need to add a third funding bucket to AFG and SAFER. Those are the most famous grant programs related to firefighters and stations, but neither one can be used for fire station renovation and reconstruction. So I think they're just building, you know, building momentum and educating staffers and, and members about the issues and why the specific grant program is, is so important. These things are hard to do. It would be a brand-new grant program, and the budget environment is, is very difficult. And so I think there was some apprehension to do something at such a high authorization amount, so we negotiated with Republican partners to have it lower. So that's why there's the difference from 1 billion to 750 million, which was where our Republican counterparts were more comfortable, and it's an appropriate amount for a grant program that would sit alongside those that have the same amount.
Thank you, Francesca, for being here, appreciate it. Just, I was doing a little bit of research, obviously beforehand, just, and I want to clarify what I think you said was basically, we just basically, it'd be best if we could help get our Maryland delegation to support, to sign on to the bill, is that right? Or to support it? And it's not that it, from my, when I was looking around, it's not that there's a, a particular negative piece or component of the bill that is bad, it's just that a lot of the, or a lot of the congressmen just haven't had a chance to even get around to actually signing on to it. They just haven't been asked.
Yes, exactly, exactly. So, yes, there's not any, there's not like a gotcha part of this bill. It's pretty simple and straightforward. Frankly, people don't really think about fire stations as needing renovations. It's like fire equipment and personnel, both of which are very important. But fire, one example we just heard from, actually from FEMA, is in Texas, there was extreme heat a couple of weeks ago, I mean, ongoing, it's seen across the country, and firefighters were, I mean, sweltering inside of the barracks because there was not appropriate ventilation. And this extends to, you know, HVAC systems and, you know, cancerous chemicals, like, I mean, the, the issues sort of are, are quite extensive, and, and they range in whether it's just like needing renovations or a completely new ventilation system, et cetera. But it's just the Texas example is one where, you know, how can firefighters do what they do every day if, if within the fire station, they're, you know, they're, they're not provided the infrastructure that they need to, to work at their, their highest potential? And so I think there's just a, a lack of understanding about what, where the funds would come from for something like this, if that makes sense. So I think being educate, you know, helping people understand what existing grants exist, why this, why this is necessary, and what it would sit alongside, and just making people aware of the needs across Maryland. And like I said, we have 370 fire stations. The last time we did a survey, about 70 needed some form of repair. The needs are probably higher, and that was just, you know, a survey that we did. So we, we might have missed a few. So the needs are, are existing and ongoing, so, and will, will just continue as the fire stations become older.
Does this have the endorsement, I would, I would ask, of the National Firemen's Association or the State Firemen's Association of Maryland?
I'm so sorry, I can't see, but I, I wasn't able to hear the question.
President Cannon was asking if this bill has been endorsed by the National...
Or the State Firemen's Association.
It's been endorsed by the International Association of Firefighters, International Association of Fire Chiefs, National Volunteer Fire Council, Congressional Fire Services Institute, and the National Fire Protection Association. So, but we are looking for partners all the time, so I'm happy to reach out and make that connection if, if we haven't already.
Yeah, the Maryland State Firemen's Association, I was wondering if they endorsed it?
I personally have not reached out to them, so that's a, that's a great do-out for me. I'll get on that tomorrow and make sure that they're aware of the, the bill and that I connect, connect with them.
Would, would it help if we had not just our support, but maybe the local firemen's chief associations to send, maybe give us a letter of support for this as well?
Absolutely.
Absolutely. And, and the next question I had is, this is for, obviously, this is for volunteer and full-time. This is for both, right? I was just curious if, I, I'm just asking the question, if this is to go through, do the volunteers have first come, or, or does it go right to whoever applies first?
So, the details of that, that's a great question. I, off the top of my head, I'm not aware, as written, you, the applications would be considered, like, as applied through the grant program. FEMA would obviously, because this is a new program, we're working with FEMA to sort of understand the resources that they would need to administer a program like this. $750 million is a lot of money, so, you know, how they would go about doing that. I assume that it would be similar to AFG and SAFER, where departments and stations apply and are considered on a case-by-case basis. But as written, the bill does not prioritize volunteer or full-time in any way. I think it would be needs, based on need and the application.
Yeah, the reason why I ask is, most of our county is volunteer. Salisbury has, has full-time, but other than that, it's pretty much all, all volunteer and... a has full-time. But uh other than that, it's pretty much all all volunteer. And uh, you know, yeah, they desperately need money. And I think this is great. I just wanted to, you know,
Yeah.
make sure that, I don't know if it's possible to prioritize the volunteers first. It's just just a question. I think everyone needs the money. But uh I don't I don't know if that's a that's an ability. And and when this comes about, um the volunteers don't necessarily have the help with writing these grants all the time. And I don't know if that's an avenue where maybe the senator can assist these uh these local uh small companies that just don't quite have the manpower to write these grants because they they are labor intensive and uh and they need the money.
Tri-county or two.
Yeah, maybe the tri-county.
Good point.
The technical assistance piece is is critical, understanding that, like you said, the um a lot of the volunteers are, like you said, they're they're needing a little bit of assistance with the grant applications. And I know, Francesca, we are um, I've been approached by, since I started the position, multiple um uh fire um fire companies and groups with help from congressionally directed spending. There's, you know, other different types of pots of of money available, but this one would be specifically for um that construction and and renovation.
That's a very good point. Volunteers volunteers need it, I think, the most. They don't have the support of 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 tax, tax revenue. They need it the most. And I think somehow or other, they are the ones that are going to be most compromised because they don't, as you said, they don't have the grant writers.
And that leads me to another question is, you you're making this grant, and I I love this, and I applaud you all for taking the initiative to do this. But is there an idea to possibly have a a grant to fund for a county volunteer grant writer? Because I I've had, uh, it it, this is just an idea, and I I it's worth kicking around. But uh I've had volunteers say, we need help. I mean, they need help. And uh they can't quite afford or they don't have the know-how to do all of this. And it's just, maybe it's an idea to maybe have a grant for us to apply for so that we could have a dedicated grant writer just for volunteer service, maybe in general.
Francesca, are you aware of any um firefighter groups that do this kind of support or anything through the state that we could point people in the direction of?
Yeah. And I'm so sorry, I can't see anyone, so I can't direct my gaze toward the first, the everyone who's talking. So I apologize for that. But um these are all really, really important points. And I think the more that we're pushing, I think the big priority is to get as much mobilization behind the authorization because that's kind of the biggest hurdle in this sort of trickier budget environment. But the question of how this is act, you know, once passed, how is this actually, how does this actually work? Um, that's a conversation we've started to have with FEMA. And I think that your point about, you know, okay, it's great that this money exists, but what about these smaller volun- all volunteer fire departments? Um, another do out for me is to really look into whether there's existing resources or pro bono or uh, you know, free, free resources for uh volunteer uh fires, fire stations to apply for, like what happens for all volunteer fire stations that apply for AFG and SAFER grants? I I don't know off the top of my head, don't want to speak um, you know, without those facts. But I think that would be a good place to start. So um I'm gonna get that information to Alyssa and she can uh bring it back to the council. Um or or I can email somebody directly. But I think that would be a good place to start, just to see how those grants are, how that works right now. And if not, I mean, the senator is a very entrepreneurial thinker. I think that that that's a great uh thing to take back and and think as an office. You know, how can, when we're thinking about these bigger authorizations, how can we think of making it even more accessible to those who need it the most? Um, one thing I do want to know, and this is kind of wonky, but I think important, um, we got into the Department of Homeland Security Appropriations Subcommittee Bill text, uh report language that requires FEMA to provide Congress with um a report in 180 days after enactment on the reconstruction and renovation needs of career fire departments, combination fire departments, and volunteer fire departments across the country, and then an estimation, an estimated cost for those needs. So this kind of report would be really helpful to sort of indicate, you know, what percentage of the fire departments that need renovation and reconstruction are volunteer. That data would be very helpful. Uh because right now, I I'm not aware. And that would include, obviously, fire departments in Maryland. So that report will be a very helpful um piece of information for us to work with as we're thinking about, you know, if it doesn't pass this, Congress will obviously push it again um next, the the following uh session. And with this report, um it might help us include more language in the bill that directs, that helps volunteer fire departments more specifically.
One more question, and I'll shut up. Uh, would it help whenever this comes around that maybe a representative from maybe the county come to the Congress and testify on the need for this? Would that, I mean, is that a benefit? Would that, I mean?
Always. I mean, you can't tell a firefighter no. Like,
Yeah.
they are heroes. Um, so that's actually what got uh Senator Murkowski on board is is a bunch of firefighters and chiefs came to from Alaska. It was a fly-in day. And they said, listen, like, this is huge. We really need this. And there's a bill that Senator Van Hollen is thinking about. And she was like, sign me up. This is something I can do. So it's definitely helpful, you know, um as we're mobilizing, I mean, you know, Representative Harris would be a great partner to have on this. Um if if you can reach out um to his office and and other members of the Maryland delegation. I mean, it would be great to have everybody on board. Um, you know, to their credit, I'm not sure how much outreach the House is doing. So, you know, the Senator or Representative Pascrell's office might not be bombarding people. Basically, how, I don't want to transplain the process, but basically, you have, the bill's introduced, and then the staff kind of just do a bunch of uh whipping of of cosponsors. And they try to get as many members on. They just might not have been doing that outreach as extensively, um or might have had a bunch of other priorities that they're working on. So I don't want to say that there's a reason why the Maryland delegation is not on. Uh but I think definitely having a letter of support from from you to the entire Maryland delegation would be very helpful. Um and having people come to the Hill and and meet uh with staff and representatives and senators is always welcome. Um, so I, it it would, it would, it's always welcome to have people come. And I think it would be helpful in this case.
Any other questions? Everybody okay with sending the letter? Absolutely. Francesca, thank you very much for your help. And Alyssa, we appreciate you setting all this up and taking your time to be here tonight. Thank you.
Of course. I'm just sad I couldn't be there in person. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Francesca. Appreciate it.
All right. Thank you very much. Thanks, Alyssa. Next item on the agenda is a discussion on cannabis legislation. We have Mr. Andrew Illuminati and it's Lori Porter. Good to see you both. How did you get last on the agenda? At nine o'clock. Thank you for preparing everything, Mr. Illuminati.
Yes.
Very thorough.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Yes, you, yes, certainly.
Good evening to everyone. We're here um to have a discussion on, again, cannabis. And um we have a presentation that um Mr. Illuminati has put together. And it was also a presentation that he presented before the Planning Commission about a week ago. Um and we wanted to share that with you and also to get some feedback as well. So I'm going to turn it over to him at this time.
So the politically correct term is no longer marijuana, weed, pot, cannabis. That's the term everyone uses. Uh, so that's just the new term. It's no longer referred to as marijuana. There were times when they went back between the J being an H, and now it's just cannabis. Uh, so this is an overview of what the differences are, what's being regulated, what is not being regulated, and then also to answer what is hemp. And these are definitions in the statute. So why is this allowed? Last year during the general election, there was a ballot referendum to allow for adult-use cannabis by adults 21-plus. That what that passed, the General Assembly passed the legislation that we are now discussing in the form of the Cannabis Reform Act. And then it went into effect July 1st with a legal adult-use marketplace in Maryland. So this was sort of discussed last time I was here, so I'll go a little faster. There's three forms of revenue dispersment. First is dispersment by law. That's some of the entities. Second is to fund the cannabis administration. And then third to the counties. And then the municipality, if there is a dispensary located within it, receives 50% of what the county receives. The Community Reinvestment and Repair Fund is one of the mandated uh programs. So this is revenue that gets distributed to the county to fund low-income communities. Uh, and as you see towards the bottom, each county shall adopt a law establishing the purpose for which money received from the fund may be used. And then beginning in 2024, there needs to be a biannual report. So in the coming weeks, we'll be asking for that law to establish where it's going. Basically, the only thing it can't go towards is funding law enforcement agencies or activities.
Any idea what type of community-based initiatives are being suggested?
Head rounds.
If you don't, you don't. That's what I, we gotta, we gotta ways to go.
It's
It's too early yet.
Okay.
There are great ideas written into this without follow-through definitions and
Right.
We'll see, we'll probably get COMAR regulations in the coming months that will further define what can and can't be do, be done. Uh, the, these are some definitions that we'll be using throughout when the Planning Commission discusses growers versus processors versus dispensaries and onsite consumption establishments. So current recreational dispensaries, there's, as we discussed last time we were here, the, there's one in Maryland. So that was a medicinal facility. They paid a conversion fee. And then that's all at the state level, bless you.
Thank you.
And that's located at Peninsula Alternative Health at 1003 Mount Herman Road, Salisbury. However, by January 1st, 2024, the state will award additional dispensary grower/processor license throughout the state. So this is the location of the dispensary in Wycomico County. You'll see on this Google aerial image. Uh, you think this was taken on the weekend and, or maybe during a weekday? I've, since the sheriff and I were up here before you 14 days ago or so, I've made a point of driving by that location at various times of the day. And if the aerial photograph was taken today, it would look nothing like this. Uh, before tonight's council meeting, I drove by where Going Nuts is located. There was a tow truck driver there. I spoke to a tow truck driver. And that tow truck driver has a contract with every non-cannabis business to tow. Uh, ideally, it would be a deterrent. Every time I've driven by, I've seen a tow truck there. And uh, it's unfortunately not. Apparently, that is something right now that people see it, park, and just try to run in before they get hooked up. There's been some, there's a BOC report after the sheriff was here about what the dispensary was doing, putting up signs saying, be a good neighbor, don't park where we're not allowed to park. Today, I actually did see a cone set up at the dispensary and in what I imagine is an employee outside in a green vest or appear to be directing people. But nonetheless, I saw individuals walking across, not even utilizing the sidewalk, but just walking along the, in between the parking lot of the other businesses. So uh
Wanted to go back just very quickly on the licensing that the public understands very clearly that as of January 1st, 2024, it will be the state and not the county that will be awarding these additional licenses.
Absolutely correct. The county does not have a say in who, to whom to award the licenses, whether it's dispensary, processing, or growing. So no one at this level is being asked to make that decision. That's made by the cannabis administration. All right.
Thanks.
I read a report this morning that said we're 30 days in, and statewide, there has been $64 million worth of recreational cannabis sales in one month in in the state.
I can believe that.
Gives you an idea how much money is involved in this.
So one thing that the county does have control over is onsite consumption. So this is the distribution of cannabis or cannabis products, which are subsequently consumed at the place of business. This is oils, ointments, edibles, tinctures. If you don't know these terms, I had to look them up myself. They're defined in the law. Uh, but what cannot be consumed onsite is indoor smoking, and that concludes vaping. But this is, somebody walks up, buys a cannabis brownie, and then sits down and consumes it there. And that's what onsite consumption is. Now, state law did put some prohibitions into what can occur at onsite. So all onsite, all on-duty employees cannot consume cannabis. They can't distribute free samples. There can't be consumption of alcohol, the smoking or vaping of tobacco or tobacco products, an activity that requires an additional cannabis license. Uh, you cannot serve somebody who's impaired, intoxicated, and no one under 21 is admitted. But nonetheless, a lot can occur onsite. There are some requirements for employees. And if this county did go in the direction of allowing for onsite consumption, the county may adopt additional requirements for education on safe consumption of cannabis on the premises of a licensed onsite consumption establishment.
And you mean something that is, to be clear, that's, so I'm trying to wrap my head around. So this is
Sure.
Exactly. If you even get there, if the county does not allow for onsite consumption, and one of the things that the sheriff discussed last time is there are no uh officers who are trained in field detection of persons under the intoxication and possible impairment of a non-alcoholic substance. There's not a breathalyzer test like there is. And so potentially, you have this situation where onsite consumption, and how is it going to be able to, when someone leaves there, pull them over and determine whether or not they're impaired or intoxicated by CDS? So, or cannabis here. So this is what onsite consumption is. That's probably the biggest thing that the county has direct control over. And unless the county authorizes it, uh, the municipality would also have to authorize it. So the county by can say, we're not going to allow onsite consumption. There's some debate on whether or not the municipality can override that. But if the language of the bill is only if the county and the municipality agree that there will be onsite consumption. In this, so then we get into zoning restrictions in general. So the county may establish reasonable zoning requirements for cannabis businesses and decide how to distribute its allocation of revenue. The county may not unburdenly, unduly burden a cannabis licensee, prohibit the transportation of or delivery through political subdivisions, meaning from Worcester County into Wycomico County, prevent an entity whose license may be converted from gaining that license, which has already occurred for the one uh medicinal, former medicinal shop in the county, enter or into an agreement for the cannabis establishments to provide money, donations, and kind contributions in order to exist in the political subdivision. And the county may not impose its own tax on cannabis. But the county, as we do said, But the county, as we do said, has the ability to zone. There are some zoning restrictions. 500 feet of a existing primary or secondary school or a licensed childcare center or registered family childcare home or a playground, recreation center, library, or public park. And not within 1,000 feet of another dispensary. To give you an idea of what 1,000 feet is though, where the, on Mount Herman Road to the Burger King at the intersection of Civic and Mount Herman Road, that's barely 1,000 feet. So 1,000 feet may sound like a lot, but put it in context of where the dispensary is to where the Burger King is, that's 1,000 feet.
What do they mean when they say, they, they say that planning and zoning will coordinate all this. But then they say that the county may not unduly burden the cannabis business. What the heck does that mean, unduly burden?
Taking a step such as requiring 1,000 parking spots per one square foot. So could you even actually accomplish that? No. Is any other business in the county have that regulation on top of it? No. But there can be an idea of what protects the public health, safety, welfare, balanced against what state law allows.
Are we aware of what all those intricate details might, there might not be? Parking and, I mean, we have to have some guidance on where Ms. Carter goes with this. So how do you structure it? If you, do we actually have lists of things which were concerned, considered a burden on the cannabis businesses?
No, it's just a generic term, but it's something that the Planning Commission will actively look at. So for example, on the state law, if you look, there's nothing, there's no limitation on houses of worship. But the county may say, that's important to us. We don't want a dispensary within 500 feet of a house of worship. And so if you look at these def, of what's there, playground, rec center, library, public park, that's more youth oriented, not necessarily adult quality of life oriented. But houses of worship would be a prime example of something that requiring the same 500 feet, I would argue, if challenged, does not unduly burden. But if one was to say you cannot have a dispensary located within 5,000 feet of an open space, however broadly that's defined. And when you do look at the map and the zoning within the county, you couldn't actually put a dispensary anywhere in the county physically under the regulations that get adopted, then that would be unduly burdensome. If you, if it's written in such a way to make it impossible for them to operate.
I liked how they said that we may reduce the distance, the 500 or the 1,000.
Extend it, yeah.
We can reduce it, but we can't extend it. And that's something, we have 30 more if we want, but we can't have 10 less.
Yeah.
Make any sense.
And the other part, you mentioned, John, it basically, when it says unduly burden, it, it basically opens the door that they can do anything they want to do. I mean, really, it does.
My question is, is there any limits to how much legal cannabis someone can buy?
There are. I was not prepared to answer that question. It's, it's written into the code though, but from a zoning perspective, that wasn't the concern today. I can get you that answer.
Any answer on that? That's interesting. Talbot County implementing their moratorium for nine months.
It's not legal, right?
So there's a couple of different concepts with the moratorium. Right now, we know between now and about January 1st, the state is not going to award any more license. So one of the reasons why we're here tonight and we asked for this is because the staff have an expedited plan that will still comport with county law, but to get this back before council in a timely manner with proposed legislation. So there's going to be the regular planning commission meeting next Thursday. That is not going to address cannabis. But at the end of the month, on the, I believe the 24th.
August 24th.
Is going to be a special planning commission meeting solely to discuss cannabis. The intent is to conclude that meeting with the ability to have a public hearing at the next meeting and ideally recommend legislation with a director's report to this body by October 3rd, which is your first meeting in October. Depending on how everything is moving, a work session that night. I believe it will have to be introduced as emergency legislation in order to know that this gets passed before. But understanding the concerns that have been expressed at the last meeting, what I see tonight and expect to receive more comment on tonight is get up to the line of, without going over, unduly burdensome. Is that the feedback that?
I just think that we'll need the minutes of the meeting. I don't know how long it takes them. I mean, we can't get the minutes before they, before they approve the minutes. But I think we'd need the minutes and we need to also know what the public input was, right?
Really correct.
And we possibly get them that quickly, right? Because they have to approve the minutes in their, in one of their sessions.
With the meeting being on August 24th, possibly, and we are dealing with a, a staffing situation with one of our staff that normally staffs that meeting is going to be out.
Maybe we don't need minutes if we can just get a.
But if we can at least give you at least a synopsis, I think that's at least something that we can do.
Okay.
I have a question. We talked about the 500 feet from the churches. Are we going to put that in there?
That's, so this is what's in state law. Staff, we began to look at houses of worship, but also expand that recreation center is not defined. But there are definitions for active recreation and something like recreation center in the county code, which will be broad and include places like where kids go, but that aren't publicly operated. So thinking, though these are not in the county, Coco's Fun House, the Trampoline Park up north, those are types of places where you go, okay, does that fit this definition? But let's expand that definition if the goal is to not have these dispensaries near the youth.
Is the thought process that if we had it next to a Coco's, that a person would walk out of the Coco's, light up, and then go give it, you know, go give their joint to the, to the kids at Coco? I guess I'm, I'm failing to understand. First of all, I don't think that Maryland has given us much leeway to do anything about it. They clearly didn't care about giving us money to have within the county. This is basically just a Maryland situation and we don't have the ability to, in my view, to really do much of anything. Obviously, a, a, a large majority of Wycomico voters ended up putting this forward. Every single county in the state voted to approve marijuana. I guess what I'm struggling with is, is the juice worth the squeeze? Or what, what real, what real ability do we have to make an impact? And what does that actually look like? And that's, I'll be excited to see that. I'm glad you're going through the public process to be able to get there. But, you know, at the end of the day, I, yeah, I don't want, just like I, you know, you go through Delaware and you see the, you know, the liquor stores and the cash for, you know, checks, you know, cash or check immediately, like all those kinds of things on every corner. I don't want to see, obviously, whether that be liquor stores or, you know, or cannabis shops on every corner. But other than that, I just don't really see where we have any kind of real leeway to do much. Because the, the state has been, I mean, just looking through this, I'm, they really didn't give us much of anything to really work with. And at the same time, I don't know what value we are. I, I'd be interested to see what you come up with, I guess, and, and hopefully that'll be helpful. But I just don't know that, you know. I mean, if we approach it with the same kind of thought as, you don't want to have a, I mean, and, and maybe you can check this to make sure that it's comparable with, you know, you don't have a liquor store that's right next to, you know, to a daycare or whatever, or, you know, a Coco's Fun House or, you know, like those kinds of things. So it'd be nice to be able to see what that really looks like. And, and last thing I'll note is obviously there's a huge difference between alcohol and, you know, which has no benefit whatsoever to the human body compared to, you know, I watched the, the piece on, from, you know, Dr., what's his name, on, basically on, on kids with, you know, there's medical uses, obviously. I, I don't know that many of the people that had their medical license, I'm not sure all those people had medical issues. But nonetheless, you know, y, y, you might view that more like a pharmacy. You know, you go to a pharmacy to be able to get a product that helps alleviate or, or, you know, your ailment. So I don't know, I guess I'm, I, just so I'm clear on where I'm strug, or struggling with and thinking through this, I don't think the state of Maryland has given us much leeway. And then I don't know that we're, are we viewing this more like it's a hazard like alcohol? Or are we viewing this more like it's a, you know, a pharmacy? And so I guess, I just want to throw that out to you all to see where I'm coming from. And I, I, I'm glad you're going through the public process. I'm glad to see what they come up with. I don't want the county to obviously be overrun with these kinds of stores. And I don't know, but I also don't know what ability we have to, to affect that. Because it, and in reviewing what you sent, I'm like, wow, the state of Maryland really just, just didn't give us any options to really regulate this, do they?
But that's what staff is for. That's what legal guidance is for. And that's actually why we're here today, to understand what the council's generic thoughts are about this. Appears you view it as a medicinal dispensary, but not to be over-proliferated. But others may say, I want as minimal as possible. And understanding that, because with the time crunch to get this done before another round of dispensaries, processors, or growers are awarded, there's zero ability to rezone where the current place is now. And when you look at it, it says 500 feet of a school, except look at where Y High is in relation to this. Is 500 feet really enough? I mean, this is what the state told us. But we've already got prime example number one of 500 feet isn't great. And that's not me speaking personally, that's me speaking from what we're getting feedback from the public and what you're seeing when you drive by various hours of the day.
Realistically. What about Dub Point? Isn't it really, really close to Dub Point?
Dub.
It's right, right there.
Because they had, they had center, they had daycare center.
They have a lot of, a lot of services that occur at that particular facility.
The Board of Education have the.
The Board of Education, so there's a lot.
Early childhood right there.
Yes.
Old Board of Education.
Yes. So to head back to what you were saying, Councilman Hastings, no, it doesn't give us much leeway. But I think that the path that we're trying to take is a path that at least if we put something there, because again, these licenses are coming down the road soon. And if we don't have something, then we're going to be pretty much in a position where we won't have anything to kind of guide or to be able to help that particular situation.
Yeah. And just to add on to the, to be clear that, you know, the, the piece I saw was Dr. Sanjay Gupta and his piece on, there was a couple, there was basically kids with, that have epilepsy issues. And those, it changed my point of view about seeing it as what has been a Schedule I drug to being something different. But to be able to go from 12,000 seizures a year to two, you know, and, and to be able to have then those kids go into class. And that's because of the, you know, from understanding the CBD side of things of it. So I don't want to be able to, and from what I understood from following what the state of Maryland was doing, they were not going to allow pharmacies to sell this product. They wanted intentionally block, block that. So I don't want to have a situation where we make it harder for individuals who, you know, who need that particular medicine to then, to, to, to receive it. Not that I'm really worried about that, but I want to be aware of that. Because I think it's very quickly, and, and as the sheriff brought up earlier, you know, it gets cast as if it's the same as alcohol or other kinds of things. It's not quite that way. But, so I'd rather us be thoughtful on how we do it. I don't have strong feelings per se. I really don't feel like the state gives us much leeway because it should be like 5,000 feet, not, you know, like you're, you know, that's the distance at least that we should be thinking about.
So a rocket hit 500.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, I think some research and a couple of the counties, one in particular had made it 2,500 feet. And they got pretty much, was it one of the other counties, I think it was like 2,500 feet? And that was not supported. That's, they actually got called out on that one. So.
Wait for your guidance and the guidance from the commission.
Yes.
And as soon as you can get us any new information, Andrew, whatever you come up with during the meantime, it's fine. Feel free to pass it on to Mrs. Hurley as well. All right?
And I was just, I'm just going to throw this in right at the last second. You know, once we come up with a plan of some sort, I guess maybe we could get a survey. I mean, these people, the people that consume cannabis are condensed in one area right now. And, you know, we serve everyone and, and apparently this is very popular. Now, I'm not a supporter of cannabis, I'm just saying this right now. But maybe it's a good idea to get a poll of, you know, what some of the users want and then get a poll of, well, you know, it's, apparently it passed, every county voted for it. I didn't, I, I didn't vote for it, okay? I'm just going to say this, but being a nonpartisan person, I'm trying to figure out of, maybe we can get a poll from, from one side and another side and kind of make a happy median. That way we don't have a full room.
Thank you.
That were pre-existing primary or secondary schools, like you use a example of Y High. Some, maybe some state officials need to be noted that the present dispensary is right across Y High.
It must meet, it's the 500 feet guidelines. It, it's just.
Is it 500 feet?
It's 500 feet.
500 feet, that's what it says.
Maybe it's the actual building.
It, it's.
They used to use with alcohol, the front door. And I don't know if they do the same with this or not. Article 2B, I think they used to say the front door or something like that, I believe.
All right, thank you again.
Thanks, guys.
I have to ask a, a counsel, we're going to entertain a motion to adjourn from the work session so we can go back into legislative session. Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. We have to go back into legislative session very quickly here. We have to have a, entertain a motion to reconsider legislative bill 2023-11 for housekeeping measure on a date.
So move.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
The, the motion to reconsider passes.
What we have here actually is that what Mr. Mitchell had brought to our attention, but it got bypassed during the discussions. There's two references to the date of June 9th, 2023 in this legislative bill. Those need to be amended to June 6th. So I need a motion to do such.
I make a motion to amend legislative bill 2023-11 to replace the date of June 9th, 2023 with the date of June 6th, 2023.
Motion to amend the two dates, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion is carried. Legislative bill 2023-11 has been amended. Entertain a motion to approve legislative bill number 2023-11 as amended.
So move.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose.
Pose.
Want to, want to pose? Legislative bill number 2023-11 as amended passes. No need for roll call vote on the amended? We know what the roll call is?
I don't know.
Mr. Mitchell, do you think that's probably the best thing to do, just as precautionary?
And you can do it, but you, you know, everyone voted one way except one person, so. Yeah, but a roll call won't hurt.
All right, we'll do a roll call. Shani? Shani?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, thank you.
All right.
Legislative bill 2023-11 passes as amended.
As amended. And then you, a motion to adjourn from.
Entertaining motion to adjourn for legislative session.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Means adjourn. Thank you, Ms. Hurley.